Welcome to. It is not February 27th, it is March. Am I in the wrong month? I'm in the wrong month, people. Hold on. It is not February. March 20th, 2023, 7:00 PM, Board of Trustees meeting. But first, we're going to start with our public hearing. We're going to have a public hearing at the Village of Romeo tonight. The purpose of the hearing is to hear comments or written on the application for industrial facilities tax exemption request by LNL Products. And over in the Romeo Corporate Park, I'm not going to read the parcel number. It's all there. Would anybody like to speak? Now is the time.
Well, good evening.
Welcome.
My name is Kurt Schwanek, and I'm with Macomb County Planning and Economic Development. So tonight, we've got a public hearing related to the application for an industrial facilities tax exemption certificate. So my role here in the development team is to lend the county support. We support this application. We support the investment. And we're also recommending, hopefully, that the village, that the, will approve the application for the full 12 years that is allowed. So our economic development team, we have many responsibilities throughout the county and many different jurisdictions. But our primary two responsibilities are business attraction and business retention. And incentives like this abatement, like this industrial facilities tax exemption, are an important part of both the attraction piece and the retention. We want to make sure that businesses who are already here, like LNL, continue to invest and expand in your communities and also create good-paying jobs, like what is happening in this situation. So incentives like this one have already been committed to by the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, Michigan Works, and the Macomb Community College. Having partners that commit to these projects financially and otherwise help ensure that these expansions happen in Romeo, happen in Macomb County, and also happen in the state of Michigan. Businesses like LNL and some of our larger companies, they have options. And we want them to continue to invest here, and by embracing them, supporting incentives, both through the Michigan Economic Development Corporation and our local communities, makes us an attractive community. It makes us an attractive county. Hopefully, we want to continue to do that. So that's why we're asking that that full 12 years be approved. If you have questions about the application process, I'm happy to do so. John here is from LNL, much more knowledgeable on the project. You can tell him about the company, how long they've been here, more details on the expansion. So if you have questions, please, I guess I'll direct you to John. If not, if it's the process, I can certainly answer those.
Yes, if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer those about the project. But for those of you who know LNL, we've been in the community for a long time. You know, Bob and Jean started the company in 1958, located in Romeo in 1961, and it just takes off from there. You know, the high-paying jobs, no doubt, that's a win-win. It's a win for LNL. It's a win for the community. Actually, I was just telling my two coworkers here, on my way out to kind of this meeting, I totally forgot about just even the LNL Foundation, because I feel like the employment things are win-win in our culture and bringing these people on board. But then I said, you know, I was walking out the door, and I said, hey, I gotta go to Peggy's office. I said, I totally forgot about the amount of, you know, love and passion that LNL has for the community. And, you know, I walked back in the office. I said, hey, Peggy, remind me, how much mind do we give to the STEM, some STEM grants this year? It totaled, you know, $180,000 to local schools. And so LNL invested into Romeo, both from an employment standpoint, and just one of our values is just being a good citizen in our communities. That's one of our eight values. And, you know, the $180,000 is, you know, kind of a part of that. But, you know, like Craig had mentioned, we looked at options, and, you know, Romeo is our home. It's the home of our world headquarters, because we are a global company. And so, yeah, we're vested in Romeo, and hopefully Romeo is vested in us, but we're open to, you know, taking any questions that you may have about the project.
I follow up to you.
Turn on your microphone.
I was just curious on. Thank you. Curious on the number of Villages employees that you had out there, and she gave me the answer. I think we currently have 15, but you employ a bunch of residents in Bruce and Washington Township also, plus Emily City. So you're definitely doing the communities at large benefit as far as providing employment in this area. And, yeah, you've been here a long time. John and I went to school together, and I've known his dad too for a long time. So I think the longer that you're here, the better we become friends, right?
Absolutely.
I have a question. My name is Shelley Russell. For curiosity's sake, because our climate is very different now, especially after COVID and getting stabbed and things, were you able to find local contractors, or did you have to go far and wide? I'm kind of curious.
No, actually, it was great. We have a construction partner, an E&amp;L Group, that helped us with managing this project. And if you remember, when we first started talking about this project, you know, getting trades was hard to come by. But once we got our project out there, we were very surprised about the number of bids we were getting, because everyone seemed to be overbooked. And so we got a lot of local businesses and some non-local, but we had a lot of activity for our project. Not too long ago, in December of 16, we built 75-ish thousand square feet, which, when we first opened it, we looked at it and said, how are we going to fill this thing? And then you fast forward only five years later to build this one. But, you know, the way we handled ourselves in the last project, we pay on time, sometimes ahead of time, most of the time. We say what we're going to do, and we do what we're going to, you know, we say what we do, and we do what we say. I think we got a lot of those old contractors definitely wanting to do business with us again.
Okay. Thank you. Are we all set? Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, we will close the public hearing at 7:08. And we will open our Board of Trustees meeting. Let's stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Trapp, could you please call the vote?
If I follow you?
Here.
Edwards?
Sure.
Fowler?
Yes.
Parker?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
President Poznanski?
Here.
All six are present?
Okay, let's move into our consent agenda, where we currently have our minutes. You have your closing minutes at the table in your pink papers, which do need to be returned to the clerk before we leave tonight. And then our bills. Is there anything that needs to be pulled out?
To pull out the agenda for tonight?
Okay. Anything else before we dive into what we need? What would you like?
Are we, we're looking over the last month's billings and agenda, correct?
Minutes, bills, agenda.
On the clerk's report from last month, I noticed that she gave us a readout, basically, of all the activities that you did. Could you start including the, like, the building applications in there and the wastewater treatment plant, DPW, their activities, as far as what they're doing?
You mean, like, the current projects?
Whatever they're doing. If they're working on Mussey Street, activity on Mussey, or the building applications, it's, you know, how many builders came in to fill the applications, electrical, what, I mean, you're giving us a readout of your activities, and the staff is under you. So let us know what your staff is doing, too. I guess that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Thank you.
But DPW is not under me or wastewater. They report to the president. I would just have building and payroll and accounts payable, which you guys have all the accounts payable right in front of you. So that would just be building.
Well, I was going under the, I know when you did your interview, you mentioned that you had to do some reverie man as far as the DPW people out there once before, so I thought that was part of your responsibilities.
That falls under the president.
President?
Maybe the other president acted that way, but I am in full control of the DPW and over supervisor of our police force. I do, I mean, I hear what you're saying. Building, that would be something that could come in the door, and we could start tallying things at the desk.
Yeah, I just want to know what's happening.
Okay.
Thank you.
Kind of like the other reports we get from DPW and PD that kind of spell out what's going on.
Yeah, those reports are.
Here and there.
Just to look at their stuff.
Well, in all fairness, just to, we each get our own reports, and we report the way that we would like. So I'm not going to specifically ask you to report anything as a trustee. This is hers. As an elected official, she gets to make her report, just in all fairness.
It would just be a suggestion, then, to amend the rules of procedure to include any other departments outside of the departments that are already included, if that is your wish.
Well, I'd like to know what activities are up underneath you and what they're doing.
Again, that would be something through the rules of procedure of recommend or required reporting outside of my duties that I see fit to share.
Okay, during rules of procedure later on.
Okay.
Justin, did you need something for the agenda?
Yeah. Our unfinished business, E Purple Heart Community, and move that up to special presentations. We've got some members.
Okay, so bring it up next.
Yeah, that'd be great.
If nobody has anything else?
Actually, I do real quick, if we can. If we can add on to new business, I'm going to report on the Romeo Park Citizen Task Force, and they do have a request that I need to present.
Should we do that under committee reports?
If you would like.
It's not really an official under that committee.
Okay.
Whatever.
New business.
Well, you could mention it during your trustee report. I mean, whatever you'd like. If you'd like it a little more official here. Okay. Okay. Okay, with those two adjustments, right, two, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda, as amended.
I'll second.
All in favor of approval of the agenda with the two corrections or adjustments? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, passes. Next, we have, let's look at our minutes for February 27th. Nobody wanted to pull it up? Do we have a motion to approve our minutes as presented? I will support it.
Support.
Fowler can support it? All in favor of approving the minutes as presented? Aye. Any opposed? None opposed, minutes pass. Moving into our council bills. Nobody needed to pull anything out of the bills? So if we could get a motion to approve the bills as presented?
Support.
Can we do a roll call on that as we're doing the money?
Yes. Bartholomew?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
President Poznanski?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0.
Okay, and we move into our special presentation. Let's do the Purple Heart. Let me find it in my packet here as we had a. Did anybody want to come speak? Or would you just? I can read the proclamation.
I just want to say thank you on behalf of the Post and the auxiliary. We appreciate so much your effort in giving this pass. Romeo was a place with heart. Now you've shown it's got a purple heart.
I thank you very much. I was spoke, able to speak before you a couple months ago, and I thank you because you've been really aggressive and fast about approving the Purple Heart Trail. As I said at the last time, there was over 2 million Purple Hearts that were produced during World War II. As of now, I was checking the records as I was sitting over there on my phone, and I saw there's been almost 1.8 million of those Purple Hearts that have been presented. So there's still a few hundred thousand that were originally going to be issued during World War II with the anticipation of the invasion of Japan. Earlier in the year, President George W. Bush said, "We thank you from the bottom of our hearts for your service to this nation and your continued contributions to our country. We owe each of you that have served a lifelong debt of gratitude. The cause you pursued at the call of duty is a noblest America has to offer. You have shielded your fellow citizens from danger. You have defended the beliefs of your country and advanced the rights of the downtrodden. You have been the face of hope and mercy in dark places and a force for the good of the world. And those that have borne the brunt of that are the Purple Heart recipients." At the end of World War II, President Truman said, "Our debt to this heroic men and valiant women and the service of our country can never be repaid. They have earned our undying gratitude. America will never forget their sacrifices. Thank you to the Village of Romeo for honoring their sacrifices and showing people who they were." Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, I will read our proclamation. Whereas the citizens of the Village of Romeo, Michigan, have great admiration and the utmost gratitude for all the citizens of our community who have selflessly served in the armed forces, and whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who currently serve and our veterans who served in the armed forces have been vital to the continuance of the freedom enjoyed by the people of our community and of our great country, and whereas men and women of our community have been awarded the Purple Heart for their sacrifice while serving our posthumously, sorry, after they paid the ultimate sacrifice for our freedom, and whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest American military decoration and was created as the badge of military merit on August 7, 1782, by General George Washington, and whereas the heritage of the Purple Heart represents, is sacred to those who know the price paid to wear the badge, and therefore, be it now resolved, that the Village of Romeo, Michigan, will be declared a Purple Heart community and recognize August 7 annually as Purple Heart Day and encourage the people and organizations of Romeo to display the American flag as well as other public expressions of recognition to honor our Purple Heart recipients on this day, therefore proclaimed on this 20th day of March in the year 2023. Thank you. We will be looking into signage. We just need to create it, get it made, but we will be looking into signage.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, let me put my packet back together here. Okay. We did not have any correspondence. Moving into public comment. We have public comment, sticking to our three minutes. Trustee Shelley Erresso, I should say, has generously offered to keep track of the three minutes this time. We thought about a timer, but figured we had a big enough clock as it was, didn't need to add to the wall. So now is the time. If you would like to make a public comment, please step up to the podium.
Good evening, and thanks for having me tonight. I've sent all of you an email earlier. It was rather late. It was about 6 o'clock. It was sent to the Info Village of Romeo, President of Romeo, Fowler, Edwards, Russell, Bartholomew, and Parker. It was just concerning the property at 328 East Lafayette, which is Angelica's Place of Romeo. It's located there on Haddam and East Lafayette. Last year, I was here, and the former president, and you guys, some of you guys were here also. You guys talked about a grant possibly for fixing the road in front of Angelica's Place, because it's really an eyesore. I might have seniors going there. I have the fire department going there. I have the ambulance going there. This Saturday, I watched, unfortunately, one of my residents had passed there. I watched the funeral home send out their car with their stretcher, and thank God there wasn't a body on that stretcher. But it kind of toppled a little bit because of how uneven that street is there. In the emails that I sent to all of you, there's a video in there. There's pictures also. And also, I have a quote from a local company for repaving. I know of the Paster Program. We talked about it last time, and it's going to be a 20-year venture, I believe, or by the time everything gets done, it's going to be 20 years, from what I understand from reading it. I can't wait for 20 years. I need that road repaired instantly, not more patching, not more asphalt on top of asphalt. The curbs, probably about an inch and a half, like I said, you'll see in the pictures. But I'm just curious, is anything going to be done? Because nobody reached out to me last year to say that, hey, you apply, we applied for this grant, we never got it. Like, there's been no communication. And it's, we pay $30,000 a year in taxes. We employ roughly 15 to 18 people that work there. 10 of those people that are in the Romeo area, and we have, last year, we were blessed. We have 21 people in our facility. We were at capacity, and those people there also vote. But, you know, it's an eyesore, and it's just unsafe. I did talk to Tim Hill, Bruce Romeo Fire Department, about a month ago. He came out, and he even looked at it and said that it is, it's a hazard. It's a workers' comp case. If their guys come out and they trip on over their equipment, because that equipment's not light, whether it's a stretcher, whatever else they're bringing in there, I mean, it could potentially be a workers' comp, and there's liability there on my end and on your end. And I would just like to know if anything can be done. I know the states got an excess surplus of $3 billion. Has the committee had somebody look into grants or anything for the roads in Romeo, for the emergency roads that need to be repaved? I mean, there's monies there, and I'm just curious, if you guys are looking all into that to see if there's any grants available for. I mean, there's monies there, and I'm just curious if you guys are looking all into that to see if there's any grants available for townships like ours?
Have you contacted the county? Is there any, any way the county can help?
I have an economic development. There are streets, and it is really bad there. Now, the DPW did go out last year and put a square of, I know, it wasn't, it was just trying to help the, for the structures and that.
Absolutely.
But I looked at that again recently and it's, it's pretty bad. I don't know where they're going to start when they start engineering and doing all that, but that would be a good place to have them look at.
We're starting in the northwest quadrant. That's where we're starting. It was this council's decision to do the best first. If we need to adjust that, look at different things, we can. However, I do caution as, if this is the way we're going to go, is the worst last, then if we continually change that each time someone comes up, then we need to change what we're doing. We need to change our plan.
I think we ought to address some of the complaints from the residents. I know it, ours was supposed to get done over 20 years ago and it still hasn't been addressed down the end of Dickerson Street, so. I understand, I understand, we all pay taxes here, I get that. My, 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 my point is the volume, because the people that we have there, they're already frail, they're fragile, they're 80-plus years old. And I do have EMS come out there multiple times unfortunately because of their conditions. But if you watch, if you would have watched on Saturday how this gentleman pulled out his stretcher, it's like I said, I was, I was looking through the window and thinking, Jesus, this, this could be very bad. So I just hope that someone, I know it's a three minutes here, but I just hope that someone can really take a look at it because of the type of business it is and what we're dealing with. We're dealing with frail elderly people and I don't need to have a stretcher or even an EMS worker, you know, fall because the road's so bad there, that's all. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you, we'll look at the email.
Is that just for the area right in front of your building?
Yeah, if you look at the quote, it's from the stop sign to the alleyway there. You have the quote there and, you know, take a look at it. I mean, I'm not saying, I'm just giving it out there just so give you guys a heads up that, hey, this is somewhat of a cost and you can look at it and kind of figure it out, you know, I, I, because nothing's being done. I have to give something and start doing something because if I don't press now, like, that road's just going to get worse. So there's a video, like I said, take time, it's a quick video, look at the road, look at the pictures, and I, I hope somebody reaches out to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are, are we, are we able to, Mark, readjust what we, we voted on?
I think we might want to do it as a special project. It's only, I shouldn't say only, but it's 19,200 and some dollars. It's not like, you know, six figures or something like that. So I'm thinking we, in this, to handle it as quickly as possible and stay on plan with our program already, we might want to handle this as a special project. That's my thought process.
But the east end, the roads on the east end are neglected.
Okay, we're, sorry, but we're going to stick to public comment. We could put this on our next agenda. We'll look at it over the next month and see what we can do for a special project. Do that? Okay. Any public comment?
Good evening. I'm Jim Focal, 205 Tilson Street. I'm a neighbor of Nolan Care's and I wanted to make a few, few remarks and observations about him before the vote this evening on the trustee position. I've known Nolan for about seven years and he's a fine, fine man. He takes initiative when he sees needs. He either acts on his own or if he needs help, he organizes people. He's got a tremendous, he's got tremendous organizational skills. And he's not adverse to hard work. In fact, as a, as an old man in my vernacular, I would characterize his work ethic as old school. To me, that's the highest compliment I could give him. And I think, as you know, he's got the, really the interests of the, of the community at heart through his recent charities. And so I would just hope that you would all consider that before you take your vote this evening, because I think he'd be a wonderful asset to the board. And that's it, that's all I've got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Richard Cairo. I live at 419 North Main and I've been a resident of this community for 30 years. I have a concern from what I've read in the paper and listened to people as to why it is so difficult for our elected officials to choose someone to be on the board and to fill the vacant seat because Mrs. Poznanski got elected president. It seems to me that to hear from the people in the community, they've already spoken, we've already spoken, all of us, and that the person who this gentleman talked about, who I'm not as familiar with him as he is, I would wonder why, who came in fourth, the very short difference between third and fourth, why, who, a person who ran for the council and is interested in it, why he would not be appointed by this, our council to serve when he obviously wanted to serve because he ran for election? And I'm concerned about why we're unable to do that. And I'm, I'm wondering why.
Very good question.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name's Virginia Cairo and I also live at 419 North Main Street. And I too have been a resident in this community for 30 years. I'm here for the very same reason, in terms of Nolan Care. As my husband indicated, he came in fourth during the election. One percentage point from the person that came in third place, a mere 38 votes. He has indicated that he is interested in this position. He ran a good campaign. The results are the results. I do not understand why we would not pick him, choose him. He seems to be the logical, objective person to put into this position. And if you take the other thing that I want to mention, so I, I, I am really baffled by the whole thing, that it's been going on for four months. And to me, the whole issue of having a full complement on the board is becoming an issue in itself. And so I, I'm glad it's on the agenda this evening. I hope that it is resolved. But when you look at the facts, not the emotion and the drama, when you look at the facts, I would like to know also why he has not been nominated and appointed. And one thing, as a former school superintendent, that I used to tell my administrative staff, when you're making an important decision, it's very important that you have a hook to hang your hat on. In other words, what is your rationale? You need to have a rationale why you're picking this individual or why you're picking this individual. Especially if there is a loud, or not loud, but if there's a, a large group of people that think you should pick this individual. And I think that's part of what is concerning the community as well. Because people are asking, Nolan appears to be the logical person, why is he not being nominated and approved? And so I would just ask this board, when you do come to your decision, I would ask that you please be ready to respond to that, to tell those of us. Because I said I wasn't, I told my husband, I said, "I'm not going to say that it's not brain surgery and it's not rocket science, but I have to because it's not. This isn't brain surgery." I mean, really. So when you do come to your final decision, what I ask is that you give us a rationale. The people in this community need to understand why you are moving in the direction that you're moving in. The one other thing I just want to say, and, and I will say, I don't know if this is factual, but I have, my understanding is there's another individual who is also interested in this position. And my understanding is she is currently on three committees. She's on the Historic District Commission. She is on the Parks Commission and she is on the Tree Board. And my, pardon?
That's your time.
Who said I could take your, thank you so much. Okay, so, thank you for informing me. So my understanding is she's on three committees and she is also, she also ran, she came in with lower votes than Nolan. And she is interested in this position. And I just need to say, even though I'm sure Mark would tell you this is not a legal conflict of interest, I think it is definitely going to be a perceptive contrast, a conflict of interest. And the reason is, how can you have the same person who's sitting on this committee, that committee, and that committee coming forward with recommendations, proposals, some of which may have monetary proposals attached to them, and then she jumps over the table and votes, yes, that's a great idea? So I, I just caution that you need to really think about that. And I, I think this is a large community. You need to think about diversity. If, if she's already serving on three committees, if that is a true statement, then she's really busy already. And so I, I would encourage the board to look elsewhere for this replacement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Stevens, Village resident of 43 years. I know the folks here very well. I had to ask you, but I know who you are now. I was on the board with Nolan. And the one thing I will say about that young man is he kept, he kept this old man on his toe. Because he was always prepared. He knew every word and every document that we had present. And I certainly would hate to see that talent and that enthusiasm drained for whatever reason. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Dan Griffin. I've been a resident most, my whole life. And I, I also put my name in as an interest to be a trustee. I own a business in Romeo. I've grown up here and my kids go to school here. And if I was already on this board, I would have voted Nolan in there already, one of the last couple of meetings. But I'm also interested in being a trustee, so I just want to say that. I've met the, the young man and I was impressed by him, especially in 2020 when he started that fundraiser, you know, and I heard how young he is and I was like, wow. But I've, I've always watched these meetings. I stay current. I talk to a lot of people in this town. I have a, you know, large network of experts and professionals if I ever need to consult with anybody. And I care about this town and I'm not going anywhere. And so, yeah, please consider voting for me.
Thank you.
Hi again. Hi, Elizabeth Callog, 140 Tilson. I'm here again to talk about the open trustee position and my support for Nolan Care, who had the fourth highest number of votes. The trustee appointment has been frustrating in many ways. I'm not here to be argumentative or disrespectful at all, but I do want to express some concerns. One of the frustrations I've heard from many people is that, that there were new people that were allowed to be added after the cutoff date of January 12th. Correct me if I'm wrong, but to my knowledge, there was no notice to extend that, a vote on it, or communication to the residents. To be fair, I say this respectfully, the candidates who submitted their intent after the due date should not be considered. Another frustration is hearing the statement at the last meeting that Nolan's time will come. The voter's already decided his time is now and saying otherwise dismisses our choice. Imagine how you would all feel if you were Nolan, who already accomplished so much at this stage in, in his life. Lastly, and what concerns me the most are statements about voting rights I heard from current board members during a 2022 meeting, which now seem to be inconsistent. I believe these statements are relevant and it is important for those of you who made those statements on this board to remember your words to this community. So I'm going to repeat some of these statements. As a resident, I do not want to see my vote passed on to the Board of Trustees. As a trustee, I will not take your vote away. I disagree with taking from the people the opportunity to elect the treasurer, clerk, president, or trustees. I disagree with taking the vote out of the people's hands. It is up the, up to the people to elect us. I see taking that control as negative. I don't see that as a positive because of who I have to take that control from is not what we are supposed to be doing. Taking the power away from the people is a big deal. Even if that was my only concern, that is a very big concern. I'm not going to mention names who said this, but you know who you are. Personally, it sure feels that our power is being ignored by some. Choosing someone who has less votes than Nolan or someone who submitted their interest after the due date just doesn't seem fair. You have a great opportunity here to trust, to gain trust and earn respect from those who may not have initially supported you. I trust this board will do the right thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Ruth Heidebrach, 354 Salem Drive South, Romeo, Michigan. I'm a resident, lifelong resident. And I've worked with Nolan for years. I've never seen a stronger young man, more determined to do good for his community. Even though he has a full-time job and he works very hard at that. His family, the Cares, have been instrumental in doing a lot of good things in this community. And so has Nolan. And I, even though he's young, he's got an old soul. And he is in touch with a lot of the residents in this community. And I talk to a lot of residents in the community and they, they notify us at the MIT TV. We're in touch with a lot of feelings and the feeling throughout the community is that Nolan has a right for this position. He has taken on tough roles and he's done an excellent job. And I would just hope that you would listen to the residents and the way they voted when you make your choices. Thank you.
Joe Callog, 140 Tilson Street. I basically echo a lot of what's been said, but let me reframe the argument. I'm here to ask this council to nominate and approve Nolan Care for the open trustee position. I spoke at the meeting last month and argued that the number of votes the candidate received to fill the vacant seat is really the only important qualification. We can all go on about everybody's qualifications and everybody has that kind of merit. But when you're voting, the one thing that matters is the number of votes. So I trust that the board's decision tonight is based on that principle. And that principle is the highest number of votes wins. It's fair, it's objective, and frankly, anything else comes across as political gamesmanship. It's very simple. This is the process. Last fall, candidates campaigned for the office. We had an election, people voted, and they voted on who they felt was qualified. For many of us, voting is sacred. As voters, each one of us has an equal say. And no one's vote is weighed more than anyone else's. This is equity. And this is really democracy at its best. But I understand that the board is allowing the potential candidates to get up, spend five minutes, make their case for why they should be the trustee. And 100% of the residents that I spoke with think this is the wrong approach. We don't think it's fair that the candidates who ran in the election should have to re-interview for the job. They already made their case during their campaign. They spent their time, effort, money to appeal to the voters about what they felt were their qualifications. And the people have already decided. And what they think and who they thought was most qualified is how they voted. Nolan Care had the highest number of votes. That makes him the most qualified. Is it right that a few select board members get to overturn what has already been decided by the residents? Well, that's a decision you'll have to make later. We feel very strongly that this board, that if this board decides not to appoint Nolan Care as trustee, then you're effectively saying that your opinion on who's qualified matters more than anyone else's. Basically, you're saying our vote doesn't matter. Basically, you're saying our vote doesn't matter. That's not what our democratic process is about. Frankly, that's democracy at its worst. Now thankfully, Mr. Parker, Mr. Edwards, and Mr. Bartholomew have already recognized the will of the people, and we're hoping that the others who voted no for Nolan Care will honor the vote of the people and do what's in the best interest of the residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public comment? Okay, at this time, we will move on from public comment. Move into our officer reports. We can start with our trustees. Trustee Rousseau, do you have a report?
No.
Edwards?
No.
Bartholomew?
I would like to thank the public that came out. The Romeo United Methodist Church had their first Fish Fry Friday, and we're having it the next two Fridays, so your support would be appreciated, and it was really good. That's all I have. Thanks.
I've heard all good reports about it also. Parker?
If you don't mind, Madam President, he's going to do his Excel thing right after he speaks, so. I had an opportunity to review the planning commission's meeting, and they had a great discussion about the mixed land use. And I think that it's something that we definitely need to look into. It's the in-between the commercial and the multiple, and I think it might help our community out a lot better than us making the drastic measures of going directly to commercial use. So like I said, if you get a chance, watch that meeting. It's very informing. Now I'll give it to Mr. Parker.
Turn your microphone on. Pull it up.
Yeah, I don't have anything from trustee. The planning board, we reviewed the park plans. Pretty much liked what we saw. We requested the roofing be copper. I think that was acknowledged, and we voted to move it on to the board.
Was it copper or shingle?
Copper.
Copper?
Yeah.
Yeah, just a material preference.
Yeah, that was it.
Okay. I don't see our treasurer here. Are you here? No treasurer report again this month. Clerk Trapp.
On Wednesday, March 8th, the cemetery board had their first meeting of the season to discuss such items as redoing the roads in the cemetery, potential expansion, and Memorial Day festivities. To address some concern, the cemetery board's top priority is to repave all 1.5 miles of the roads in the cemetery. The board has met with engineer AEW to create a scope of the project and projected cost. The cemetery board would like to go out for bid this spring and hopefully complete the project in three phases. And as always, the cemetery board will welcome any volunteer help for placing flags on veterans' graves for the upcoming Memorial Day celebration. Please contact me at the clerk's office for more information. Also, I just wanted to congratulate our accountant, Danielle Kelly. On March 8th, she and welcome to her new baby girl into the world, and mom and baby are doing just great, so congratulations to her. Thursday, March 9th, I chaired the Macomb County Clerks Association luncheon hosted by Shelby Township. More discussion was held on the upcoming changes to the election processes that will probably see more take place in 2024. Also, on Friday, March 17th, I attended my first legislative committee municipal services meeting in Lansing. During the committee, during the meeting, the committee reviewed over 25 pieces of current legislation that are up for votes. Such topics included the state's fireworks laws, human resource guidelines for businesses, firearm bans at voting precincts, and more. We were also able to review a large piece of legislation, not large, sorry, a piece of legislation that is about to go in front of the House that is a revision to the Open Meetings Act. The revision is 30 pages long and should go up for review in mid-April. And if anybody would like to see those revisions, I do have a copy available at the office. And that is my report.
I have, can I have a question for you? On your expansion of the cemetery, were you able to look to see as far as their retention pond? The school is using our property for their retention pond.
Correct.
Do we have any type of agreement showing that we're allowing them to use that?
Upon initial research in the office archives, no, we don't have anything in writing at this time.
Okay. So when you're talking about the expansion, are we talking about that area possibly where the water towers are?
Possibly, yes. Ms. Sandra, we do have one member of the cemetery board here. I know we were roughly talking about that. We do have a parcel of land that is near the water tower, but it's only accessible from this road right here from Parks and Rec, which would probably be our first potential expansion project.
But as far as the school using our property, you haven't found out anything or any type of agreement that we've done with those guys to allow them to use it?
I have not come across anything yet in my office.
Okay. Well, can you?
I mean, I could still keep searching, but we are looking.
No?
Here before I was here.
Okay.
Yeah. Right, so it could be in the archives, and we'll keep looking.
All right, because that's a potential leverage that we could possibly use since they're using our property. And just so the residents are aware, we like to expand our cemetery so we don't have to use Bruce Township or anyplace else to bury our own.
Well, trustee Fowler, if I could correct you, the cemetery board has the ability to make the decisions on that before this board does, and their top priority right now is the roads. Expansion is probably going to be, after the roads are done anywhere, in four to seven years from now.
But it's on the table.
Wait, the roads will be done in four to seven years?
Well, I mean, it could potentially be done in three phases, which could take three to five years for the phases to be completed. We're hoping it would be done quicker than that.
Yeah, okay. So then my question, and I'm not obviously part of the cemetery board, so I don't know the process, but if there's a thought of we need to expand or possibly use more space back there, wouldn't we want to narrow that down before we do the roads? Like if, because if you have to take trucks back there to fill in the pond or build a mausoleum, and we put the roads up, and then we're going to put trucks, I'm curious to know, was that?
I mean, that was discussed at length by the cemetery board pretty much since 2021, but they are standing firm that their top priority are the roads right now, and any word of expansion that's down the road somewhere right now at this time. Their focus and their funding is going to be going toward the roads. That is their decision. They have every right to make any decision on all the funds that they do collect.
I'm not saying they don't have a right.
Right, no.
I was just trying to think through the process because I wasn't there.
Yep, that has been their focus for two years now.
As far as the expansion you're talking about, and the roads, we still have to use the outlying cemeteries in order to bury our own, correct?
I'm sorry, say that again?
I said, we still have to use, if you don't already have a plot reserved in the Romeo Cemetery, then
Correct.
heaven forbid anybody pass away, they can't get buried here in Romeo if they don't have a plot.
At this time, but it's still a very active cemetery. We still have funerals, and I have
Right, if they don't have
Services already scheduled out throughout the summer.
So is there anything, I know you're fixed, you guys are fixed on the roads, but can you possibly look at the expansion of that, put that up there with your roads and?
That is up to the board. You're welcome to come to our next cemetery board meeting, which is April 12th.
I will be there.
And I mean, I know they've already expressed their priority listing, and you can talk with them.
The roads are bad. You've got to have roads to either get to bury your people. So if the roads are not, you know, in good shape, how can you bury anybody? If you ride up there, you see all bumping, 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 and holes everywhere.
You're talking about asphalt paving, correct?
Yeah.
I believe so, yes. If you want to look at the proposal, I can give you
I'm just looking for, in addition to what you're doing here, to try to
It's funding, though.
Keep our locals.
We don't have enough to
And I did attend the meeting and proposed to the cemetery board that as we, the village is redoing our streets and specifically being in this quadrant, that all of the material, the equipment would already be here, that possibly it could be done at the same time, not completely different projects, completely different pots of money. However, it might be a convenience that would maybe aid the project. So that's something we are thinking about. Everything, stars would have to align, but they're willing to take the chance on it. Thank you.
Thanks, Catherine.
Thanks for answering. No questions. Okay, into the president's report. I was asked to condense it, that I was telling everyone too much of what I did last month, so shaved it down a bit here. We have started in Village Hall the supervisors and elected officials meetings, doing this monthly. We come together to go over plans and talk about any issues facing us that month. We are learning that communication is key for our offices and services to run smoothly. We might be small, which divides our time, so coming together once a month provides at least an hour or a couple hours to pinpoint topics. Into our water rate group, we've continued our weekly meetings as a team. Myself, along with Clerk Trapp, met with Jeff Kennedy from Metcom again. This time, we were to go over the quotes for the water bills and the equipment necessary to fold and seal. We learned that Bruce Township actually attempted to use a self-sealing bill and had purchased the machine that we were looking into, so I contacted Bruce Township, and we had a field trip. From that meeting, we learned a lot, and the team decided to go another direction. So save the date of April 11th at 10:00 a.m. and April 13th at 6:30 p.m., where I will go over the look of the new layout of the bill and have a question-answer time. Both meetings will be held over here, just at the other building at Parks and Rec, in the senior silver room, and we will have sample bills on hand to look over. Also be on the lookout for short videos from MIT TV and WBRW, where Clerk Trapp and myself will go over the new bill and layout and all the different terms that you'll now be seeing on the bill. With our tree board, I attended a couple meetings that they had. The meeting focus currently is on the planning for Arbor Day. Thank you to Green Macomb and Second Nature Brands and the Romeo DDA for your support and donations to bring this event to fruition. Specifically, Second Nature Brands has generously donated $5,000 towards tree purchase and even volunteers to plant them. So be on the lookout on the village website and social media for the details of this event as they are rolled out. It is set for April 28th, which is Arbor Day, over at Trailside Park on Clinton Street, and will be starting at 9:30 a.m. As for the DDA, I attended their monthly meeting on the 6th and also did a drop-in on their event committee meeting on the 7th. A few things happening there is the board is planning an eight-week summer concert series at Village Park. They have set their budget workshop for April 13th at 6:00 p.m. right here. If anyone would like to attend that with the DDA, that is open. And they will be hosting a grand opening celebration of their new office at People Driven Credit Union. And be on the lookout for Spring Fest, which is happening Arbor Day weekend. I will not steal their thunder there. Just be on the lookout for what's coming your way. As for the Ford Task Force, I attended our monthly meeting. Again, not much movement here as we are in a bit of a holding pattern while Ford hands over the reins of the property to Ford Land. Around Village Hall, we had an update at the front desk computer and replaced our battery backup for our server that had gone down. We have a new great collaboration with Starkweather Art Center. A few months back, I had reached out to Grace Vane, she was just here, she just stepped out for a second, to inquire how to go about bringing local art into Village Hall. So we will be hosting a new artist display every few months in Village Hall showcasing our local talent, and I wanted to thank Laura Gabriel of the Purple Porch Art for being the first artist. We will be having some minor electrical work done next week up on our second floor as we are replacing some non-working exit signs. In our planning commission, I wanted to congratulate Andrew Hale on his completion of the MSU Extension Citizen Planner Course. Thank you, Drew, for stepping out and taking that. And then around town, just a few things. A reminder that Community Shred Day is coming up on May 20th. That will be 9 to noon right here out in the Parks and Rec parking lot. And that May Fest, the same day, will be hosted by the Romeo Lions at their fieldhouse over on Washington Street. That will, doors open at 12:00. It will include a Kid Zone, an ORV show, live music, beer tent, and cornhole tournament, just to name a few things. And then lastly, our Road Village update. I should be receiving bond specifications by the end of the month, and will be bringing a bond authorizing resolution to council for next month. There is a meeting with myself and our engineer and our DPW supervisor coming up over the next couple of weeks, where we will go over the streets that we initially put into the scope. We're going to see how much we can actually accomplish this year. And that is my report. Okay. Committee reports. I have nothing for Bruce Stewart. Either of you?
No.
No, just Superintendent Phil Berks, he reached out before our last meeting and tried to schedule something, and he never followed up, so I don't know where we're at with that.
Yeah, I have not heard from him either. Okay, our crosswalk subcommittee.
We haven't met again, but we had, discussed with President Proznanowski about having our in-house or the engineers we have on staff or contract to review the plans and review the project, and I don't know if we can
I did get a quick email. I reached out to HRC, just running it by him. I asked him, we recently had a crosswalk project done here in downtown. There seems to be a few items of concern. Would you verify the work? And he quoted me, he says, I would think this cost would be fairly minimal without looking at the plans or is built. It would range from $1,000 to $1,500 at the most. This is a cost that we could approve in hall without a motion from the board. However, I do not want to move forward in this venture if this is not where the board wants to go. If we just want to pay out the project and be done with it, I'm not going to continue down this path.
Yeah, so like last month, you know, we feel there's some major concerns and issues that should be addressed and looked at, and that's just coming from our eyes and, you know, our tape measures. And we'd prefer to have a engineer official put his stamp or his recommendation or her recommendation on it so that we can go back to the people that did it and say, hey, this should have been done this way. And we also, going through the files, found the letter where we were told how many times that the steps in front of the Masonic couldn't be removed because they were historic, and there's documentation saying that, no, they could be removed, and it was signed off on, and it never happened. And that would have alleviated a ton of the mess down on that corner by being able to redo those steps, to change the slope so that we didn't have such a steep drop-off and the rolling of the curbs, the huge step at the backside of the planter would all been alleviated by being able to add another step or changing the step pattern at the Masonic. So
Mr. Clark, with this second opinion that Mr. Parker's recommending, and they submitted a letter to President Megan here, would it give us a legal leg to stand on as far as trying to get them to correct their work?
Well, if the work was done according to the contract, then the strength of the argument, if you would, if you will, would be in favor of the contractor or the engineer, however it was laid out and implemented. If the work was not done according to the specifications or according to the contract documents, then the village has every right to ask and demand that it be done as it should have been done at the outset. So it depends on, I guess, it sounds like it would depend on if those plans and specifications are subject to review, as was just briefly mentioned. You would be in a better position to make a decision depending on the outcome of that review. If HRC says, no, this is appropriate, this is according to the contract documents, then I wouldn't advise you, or at least I wouldn't recommend that you continue to spend time and energy and money on it. On the other hand, if HRC points out reasonably and credibly problems, then I think you can approach the original contractor, the engineer, whomever is responsible for any deficiencies that might be found, and ask them to make the corrections.
And their insurance or liability portion of the job, then they'd be responsible to make those corrections.
Well, the funding for the repairs, if the contractor or engineer, again, whomever the responsible party is, how they fund that, whether they dip into their company coffers or turn it into their insurance company, that's up to them. You just want the contract executed in the manner stated and to the quality standards stated in the contract. How they fund that, if they are responsible, that's up to them.
That's what it is, quality. Thank you.
Mark, another question. Did the previous administration have the authority to sign off or okay changes to a Did the previous administration have the authority to sign off or okay changes to that project or plans that we approved prior? And then now it's kind of coming to light that it was, things were changed, things were altered without council approval.
I would need to know what those are. The answer is yes, maybe, because as was alluded to, the, under your rules by which you operate, there's an allowable expense administratively for the president to be able to commit to spending money on behalf of the village up to a certain amount without the council's approval. And it would also depend on whether these changes are considered to be material. If they're material to the project itself, then my knee-jerk reaction is it should have come back to the council for review and consideration and ultimately action or no action. But sometimes your administrative changes that aren't really material to the entire project, that your administrators, your, in this instance, the president, should be able to take care of. So I don't want to speak specifically without knowing more information, but it's possible that the council should have considered some of these changes, and it's also possible that there's no need for that.
So at this point, just looking for, are we moving forward with this, or are we closing out this project?
I'd say the second, second opinion.
Yeah, I'd like to see HRC take a look at the plans, review them compared to what was done.
Well, if you're saying there's something that could be done with those steps, then I think you probably should contact HRC. But I think that the last contractor said that they weren't able to, or they had no authority to be able to change those steps.
They were saying that they couldn't because they were historic and...
I don't remember the exact reasoning why, but I do remember that was the reason why they felt they had to do it the way it's done.
Yeah.
So you found a letter?
Yeah, I think, you know, in the files, Megan found a, President Poznanski found a letter from an engineering firm, I believe, and then...
There's a historic, yeah, Historic Preservation of Michigan, I can't remember the title, signing off that they were not historic to the building. I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah, but I think they might have checked with the masons. I don't know if they...
No.
No?
No.
All right. Then...
So I will continue to look into it, and then we can make a better decision. Hopefully, we get an answer by next month. We'll continue with that. Moving into our unfinished business, our council rules of procedure. I put in here those few edits. I did highlight for you, there was one edit that, after the fact, that one was highlighted in blue, to approve, approval of the bills to include the credit card statements within it. I made this separate so that, I put it in there so you could see it, should it be approved, but if not, can be taken out, as this wasn't discussed at the last meeting. So whichever way have you, the yellow is removed, the green is added in. So basically, we're taking apart the consent agenda, putting it back on the agenda for minutes, bills, and agenda, and then adding into the council packets the minutes for review or for information.
On that section, is there a way we could add in, more so if there was changes to the previous month's...
What section?
Minutes, under the approvals. If we could get a copy, like today, we approved last month's minutes or made corrections, and if there's corrections on those minutes, can we get those corrections in our next packet?
Sure.
So we can review the...
We post them on the website, but yeah, could print them off and put them in there, I guess.
So speaking of posting on the website, if we could back up to number, I'm sorry, can we back, can I add to that? Are you done?
Yeah, I was done with that, yeah.
Okay, I didn't want to interrupt. Number four, minutes of regular and special meetings. It mentions that you have eight days after a meeting for the clerk to present to the president to confirm, and then it goes on to explain where it needs to be posted, and the copy of the minutes shall be posted on the Village website. I'd like it to be specified of when it will be posted onto the website, so that it's not left open-ended for months, two months, weeks. I know we have that new capability now, so I'd like to see it up there, you know, within two weeks of the meeting. Can we specify that?
If you, yeah. Where are you in the rules of procedure, though?
Under A4.
Okay.
A4.
So what would you want? How would you specifically like it worded?
If they have to be to the president within eight business days, I think it would be reasonable to say, like, within 14 business days they have to be on the website?
The draft.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Yep. I have one of...
Okay.
Under number five, B5. Agenda and materials distribution, where...
B5. You got to go...
B5. Materials distribution is no later than the Thursday preceding, and I understand no later than Thursday, but is it quite possible to get it no later than Thursday, like maybe even earlier in the day? My packets tend to arrive in the evening, which only gives us not even a full day Friday, depending on who's in the office, to call and ask questions, and so if it's there a little bit earlier on Thursday, that might be helpful, unless we can count on...
I would prefer just to move it to Wednesday, then.
Well, you can do it any day you want, but this says no later than Thursday. So you could get them out any earlier, but I think they're coming right at the deadline, you know, 6 o'clock Thursday night.
So if we change that to Wednesday, and they came at 6 on Wednesday, then that would give us the full day.
Yeah, give us at least the full day Thursday.
It usually takes, just so you're aware, it takes by Tuesday when we get the last submissions, and I have most of it done, but then we have those last-minute things, and even the bills don't come. Rebecca doesn't get those bills to me about, till about noon, and then I have to print off everything and get it in there. So we're handing it to the officers about end of day.
On Thursday.
Yes, so that's why it's then on their route as time allows, not specific, you know, they have other work that's more important at times. So I would just rather prefer to say Thursday than to give the officers a specific time of when they have to drop it off, if you want it earlier.
So you want to leave it on no later than...
I'd rather move it the day before and say Wednesday.
But then we'd have to change, like, submissions from council and everything. We'd have to move that back then also.
Yep.
And my concern would be Rebecca's timing.
Yeah, because she has, she can't give us the bills any sooner.
Correct.
So...
Usually not.
So that would have to be an email document, or you wouldn't get it to the day of the meeting?
Yeah, because she can't get them to us on Wednesday. They're a Thursday thing.
Can you have these things grouped together? I mean, they came loose in every aspect.
Under the council packets, yeah.
More organized.
Yeah, my packet came all skew. I had to figure out what went where, and I'm hoping I did it right.
Mine was in order.
Oh.
Mine was all over.
Well, and again, I don't want to cause trouble, but it's, if no one's there on Friday, or depending on who is, because you guys alternate, it's a little bit of a challenge to not be able to sometimes get your packet until late night Thursday and then get through it and ask any questions.
So if we move the council bills to our online packet, we could do Wednesday.
That's correct.
Yeah. I don't like that, but I don't like that. I don't like the online.
Well, I can't really do much else for you. I'm trying to work with you here.
We have a lot of moving parts for this item.
Okay, so then, so then to be less formal about it, because I think you're the one who puts it all together.
Trustee...
Nope, I put your packet together.
President Poznanski's been doing the packets.
Oh, because it says by, submitted by Clerk Trap, so I...
I do my part of it, is the agenda, I keep an eye on what's going in, what's coming out, and yes.
Okay, all right.
She puts the submissions of what's approved as an agenda item.
Okay, so then a little less formal is if we could, if you just keep it in the back of your mind, if we could get it a little earlier, that would be helpful. I don't think we have to take a formal step if we could just get it earlier and get it organized. Sometimes mine aren't.
I can, I will try to my best, again, not getting the bills till noon.
On Thursday.
Yes.
Yes.
It's going to be then throwing them all together.
Yeah, I could see that.
So we can, can try again next month.
Okay, because it's clear that I go through it. So thank you, I appreciate that. That would help.
Okay, so no changes?
No.
Just sooner possible.
Not if we're just going to just try to...
And I guess to follow up on the organization of the packet, if we could add, not so much as in-depth as the old stuff was, where they, where Christine was telling us, recommended motions to have, but if we could just get like a page break or a title, something, you know...
Those were nice to have.
Just, not so much all the information about it, but just something to break up each section of this. Yeah, so like...
Like a colored piece of paper?
Council rules, you know...
Like we had before.
Like we had before.
Either just a, it could just be a blank sheet, or...
You don't want to...
Or just a title page or something, just to break up each section, so we know, because like you're saying, sometimes I've got them, you know, mixed in together also, and I think it's just the way they get slid, I don't know, but, and we're going through and trying to pull out this page from that and put things back together, so if we could just, even if it was stapled.
Well, easy, what I do is I make a, one packet, and I set it on the copy machine, and I print off a packet. So to staple it isn't how it goes. We'll do it.
That's what I thought, yeah.
You got interns there, right?
No. Do all my work myself, so I will try my hardest to make it a little more organized.
Something simple, the simplest thing you could do. And if it doesn't happen...
This is the simplest thing I could do.
A little less simple.
Okay, anything else?
I don't know.
Under written submissions, where it says if a member of the public can't attend the meeting, they can submit a written comment.
Where are you?
Number...
Same section?
And it says the written comment can be read aloud to the chair. Is that standard that if people submit written comments, the board reads them, or can they have a representative come and read it for them? Because imagine if all of these people submitted a written comment versus coming. So I would...
Well, it says appropriate business item, which in general was correspondence.
Right by the chair, so...
It's always worked both ways.
Has it?
Yes.
Anything else?
I did include, so on the back of that section, an email that was, or a text message that was forwarded to myself and trustee Fowler from another trustee.
Well, could I stop you for one second? And we approve where we're at, though. Am I coming back with corrections? Did you want to come back with corrections here, or just make those adjustments and we're good? What would you like to approve?
Make those adjustments.
I was going to see if we could add something related to this, somewhere in the rules.
Okay.
Regarding just communication outside of a meeting, the text that we received was somewhat of a, I don't want to say threat, but I do, and I don't know, if there's a way we...
What's happening with the tear?
Yeah. If we can include something in here to prevent stuff like that moving forward would be, would be great. I think we all need to act a little more adult-like and not throw out both big threats or comments like that. So, I don't know where or what, or how it would tie into the rules, but if we could, that'd be great.
So are you saying the rules of order could pertain to emails, text messages, voicemails, any business-type interaction? Is that what you're asking?
I would say village business communication between board members, yeah. Keeping it professional, non-threatening, not, yeah.
So is there a change or an addition that you would propose here in these rules of procedure to address that?
I wouldn't know where to add it. That's not a great area, but if something could be added, I don't know. Mark, would you have any suggestions on where we could add, or what we could add, or how we could even word something like that into these rules?
Well, you could provide, I don't really have a specific category, but I suppose under G miscellaneous, you could include, there is something to the effect that communications of any kinder nature between and among council members shall be civil and non-threatening or whatever adjectives you want to use. Yes, you could do that.
What Mark said, sounds good.
We could maybe during D, discussion and voting, all members of the council and boards are expected to conduct themselves professionally, respectfully, and ethically at all times during meetings. We could put an "and."
And or communications.
I guess that, but that section itself talks about...
Discussion.
Discussion and voting, yeah. Discussion outside of...
It should be during meetings and, or at all, just take that out, say at all times? I don't know.
In all forms of communication.
Is that what you want, or...
That sounds good. Makes it easier than adding another section.
Okay, so do you want to approve this, or do you want to come back with the addition or corrections?
I'd like to see corrections, and then we can approve next month.
Okay, anything else? Okay, we can table it till next month? Okay, next is our clerk bond.
That's me, so I was just asking if you had followed up with them and clarified their definition of those terms and where that leaves us.
Sure.
Yes, I do have some email communication with our policy holder, MML, and I cut and pasted the passage that we were referring to in our policy, as far as me being bonded, and, then he gave me a definition stating that the bond covers the duties that you perform in your position. What the policy will not cover is intentional misconduct or any losses due to criminal act. But then I re-explained that that's not what it was, was not intentional, was not a criminal act, as it says here, just failure to faithfully perform. That's just what it was. And then, then underwriting came back with a bad faith performance is an intentional dishonest act. They went on and on, and I'm trying to explain to them again, that is not what happened. I don't understand what they were missing, and then the last communication from them was underwriting is asking how much the late fee was, and I have not heard a response since I gave them the financial breakdown.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So then, once you hear back, and thanks for sticking with clarifying for them.
No problem.
Appreciate it. Okay, then that'll just get added to next month's report back.
Okay.
Thank you.
So no action. Moving into our water rate ordinance update, I would like to say that this is for review. This is not, we got this to you ahead of time, so we can look at it, talk it over. I compared the new language and printed off the current ordinance and the section, highlighted the sections for you that it was addressing and coordinating to, so, for everybody. Then I reached out to John Kesar, who is our contact here, hold on, got me an email back. Basically, he asked, I sent it to Mark this afternoon, he asked if we had addressed the irrigation rates, and he suggested we make it a little bit more specific, and I had not heard back from Mark yet, so I'm sorry.
And I agree with Mr. Kesar, if you are going to... I agree with Mr. Kesar, if you are going to, uh, essentially separate the systems, no longer have the combined sewer and water system. Separate the water into one, the sewer into the other, uh, I agree that, and if you're gonna allow the so-called irrigation, uh, meters. Uh, that you should address those separately, uh, Mr. Kesar did, uh, I think, provide Mrs. Poznanski. Which she in turn provided to me some sample language from other communities. Uh, I don't know if that's been provided to you or not, if it has, I just mentioned that it seems that, uh, the sample or example. He gave, Mr. Kesar, uh, for the Ann Arbor, uh, water rates seemed to be most appropriate for what you've been considering and talking about. You're not locked into that, but as a point of reference, I thought, uh, that language that he provided was probably, uh, most specific. To the discussions that you've been having.
That was one of the problems I had, it wasn't specific in how you were reading it. And so, that's some of the questions I was asking earlier, totally agree. Don't confuse our revenues.
Well, but also, if you are, if you are gonna go and allow multiple meters or have water, you wash your car, water your lawn. Have a meter for that, that's not gonna be assessed the sewer fee, uh, as you do now because you have a combined system. Uh, I, I do think the specificity that Mr. Kesar mentioned to Mrs. Poznanski is important, and I would recommend that you do that. One of the things I don't know, and we can have this discussion, I apologize, I shouldn't have said we, the discussion can be had with bond council. Because I believe you still have outstanding bonds, uh, for your wastewater treatment plant, uh, and you have a combined system. Those bonds were sold based on that revenue stream, your revenue stream's going to be different. Uh, it's possible, I don't think so, but it's possible that if you separate the system, uh, the systems. And now you charge less, if you will, for somebody watering their lawn than you otherwise would've, that it, it could impair the bonds. I don't think that will happen, uh, just because of the age of the bonds and, and the, the difference in the rates. Uh, but when you're discussing with bond council about the roads, uh, that subject should be broached as well.
Okay.
So what we received, I did wanna question, I think it's, it says forty-four fifty-four at the bottom, the top under the A. Number two, I thought we determined that we couldn't have a minimal charge. Or minimal allowed use of a hundred, ten thousand, I thought we had to change that and not use a minimum anymore. Thought that was part of the, I think.
Yes and no.
Andrew Hale brought that up.
Yes and no, we are doing away with the minimum, however, we do have a caveat in the ordinance as we do have, um, good couple hundred meters that don't work. So we would just not be billing a couple hundred users, so we did have to put something in there to, until we can move all the users. To can, to repair their meters.
So we have to leave minimum and not, I thought it had to be worded different, is my understanding, and not be a minimum. Cuz you can't charge for something you're not providing or not using.
The, the draft doesn't have the minimum in it, does it?
Unless I read it wrong, I think it was. Was it forty-four fifty-four?
Okay, so then which one's the draft?
For consumption charge per, uh, thousand gallons of water used.
That is the old ordinance.
That's the old.
The, the draft, uh, that, uh, I believe you have as well, if you make, uh, if that. Under section forty-four, yes, two ninety-one.
And that's.
That minimum was taken out of.
It's just, it's kinda nondescript.
Okay, I see, so that's, okay, I thought this was part of what we were trying to incorporate.
Well, it, it's, it's very useful to have the existing ordinance so that you can compare, uh, edits or the proposed revisions. To the existing language and see how it, it, it changes the structure of what you're doing.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, I just didn't know that that was, I got it mixed in together.
But we do have the language for the non-working meters, they will be charged a minimum equal to their, uh, meter size. And the ten thousand gallons for what that rate would be.
Which I think is appropriate.
And that was. And that was, um, that was approved at our December meeting when we put the pause on this to put that language in there. Because we needed to somehow address that because our DPW cannot just go change out two hundred meters. Um, first of all, we don't have two hundred meters, second of all, um, it's a matter of timing, uh, you have to get in people's homes. Uh, which is not the hours that our DPW works, so coordinating all of that. Um, we've thrown around possibly hiring a contractor to do that for us, to get that done, or just taking it chunk by chunk. So the incentive is, um, once a homeowner is notified that they don't have a working meter and it does need to be updated. Um, at that point, fifty dollars a month will be added on to that minimum bill. So if it takes a quarter, that would be a whole hundred and fifty on top of the minimum rate. So it is a bit of an incentive to get them to call us, to schedule that, to get out there to change the meter. If it changes what's needed.
And if the, the meters are not working just because of age, use, not damaged by the owner, resident, or tenant, or whatever. Are we charging them then to change the meter, or, okay?
They're responsible for their meter.
But are they responsible for it if it's just, we have a extremely old meter in there that's gummed up from the, the water and doesn't work anymore? I, I don't see why we would be charging residents to change a meter that.
Well, the way the ordinance is structured, you would, or at least a proposed amendment, because the thought being that they purchased the meter to begin with. Because the, the ordinance has, over the years, I, I don't know when it was last updated, or when, even going back further, when it was first adopted. But the, the, uh, ownership of the meter by the property owner, the purchase of the meter has consistently been in the ordinance. So, I think, I mean, you can change that, you can say, well, the village is gonna own the meters, but there's gonna be a cost for that. And so you should incorporate that into your thinking.
Same as the irrigation meter, they, you would have to purchase your own additional meter for irrigation.
Second meter, I could see, if you're doing an irrigation, yeah, you purchase, that's pretty standard in other communities. I just, if a homeowner drops something on it and breaks it, then yeah, they get charged. But if it's just cuz it's old and run out, I don't, I don't know why we would.
It's always been a homeowner's responsibility.
I understand what you're saying, but unfortunately, there's a life to a product, and if it just happens to be the end of the life, then you do have to purchase a new one.
As I understand it, our people are trying to update the meters so they can just do the, um, the tap thing like you do your credit cards on a gas pump. Um, so if the residence decides to just exchange an old one for a new one, there shouldn't be a charge there. Basically what, what Mr. Parker's trying to say, just so we can update our billing and get the old ones out and get a new one in. So, I guess it's something that we have to look at and make sure we, we institute it into this ordinance here, so people aren't paying for. Paying twice, basically.
Cuz we've talked about that before with the Wi-Fi connection and then.
Yeah, so.
So if you're gonna change out all the meters to now go to Wi-Fi, all of a sudden now those, each resident's gonna have a.
Well, all of the meters will currently work with the product that we have, it's not that everyone needs a new meter.
But if we get down that road to where we finally get to that point, it should just be an even exchange, you know. It's up there, it helps us out and it gets them more online. Just my thoughts for billing.
So, just to be clear, we need to either say that the meters are free, or we're charging for meters? Um, because to say.
If we're doing an exchange.
We're doing, it's a conditional about, upon this or that, who decides that condition, who, who gets a free one, who doesn't? We need to, one way or the other.
Exchange on a working meter, then yes, it should be just the exchange.
Well, if it's working, we're not updating it.
But if it's not working, then, yeah, pay for it. I mean, they pay enough, so.
Okay, so, working meters work, broken meters will need to be changed out and there is a fee for it, is that where we're at?
That's where I would fall, I'm not sure about everybody else.
I believe that's what our ordinance covers. So, uh, we'll have the one addition in here to cover the irrigation meter, um, more definitive, and we'll bring it back again next month for additional review.
Can I ask Tim, are we currently doing that?
Charge for meters.
Yeah, I mean, a new service, I, I can understand.
Service we charge, if it's a older style meter, which it has the analog read, not a touch read.
Yeah.
We're swapping them out, no charge.
Okay, so we are doing that.
Broken meter, there's no charge.
Okay.
If it's a older style, that doesn't work, yes, we're swapping them out, no charge.
So we are swapping them out.
Okay, moving on to our Village Park proposed plans. We had in here the same drawings from, uh, Planning Commission. Um, and then you had got some larger ones placed at the table for your review. Um, as you heard from our liaison, they had, the Planning Commission approved it and, um. Pushed it up to council, just had a few material requests, so here is what we have. Does anybody have any specific questions?
One thing that kinda came up after, just looking at it again, is, and if I, if I'm reading the plans right. There's gonna be a, a six inch step around the hole, the whole gazebo or the raised concrete.
Yeah.
What, okay. Just to stick with, you know, the ADA compliance and everything, if we lowered that to be grade, would that be problematic? Or would that make more sense where you could just, there wouldn't be a step at all? I mean, being that it's only a six inch.
So, so, uh, my name is Les Young Junior, uh, young masonry, Romeo resident, previous. Um, and I'm the masonry subcontractor for the park project. Um, I'm glad Mr. Clark is here, and if, if you wanna correct me, please, um. ADA is not a, a building code, ADA is a law. And what ADA is, is discriminating against the ability for somebody to enter and use, uh, commercial facility, the park, et cetera. So, to answer your question, as I'm, uh, hearing it, is on the back where it says ADA compliant.
Yeah.
It's not just truncated mats, there is a ramp.
Yeah.
So that way, anybody that wants to get up on the gazebo is not denied access to be on the gazebo. As far as a six inch step around, because you would want your gazebo elevated. Uh, let's say a blind person walks up with their stick, they poke the side, okay, they know there's a step there. But you're not discriminating against anybody getting up on the gazebo, whereas the other one was three, four, five steps upward. Um, so, does that answer the question about the accessibility?
It wasn't so much I was concerned about the accessibility, just would it make sense, just to make it more accessible? Could we, and I know there's fencing around most of it, right, except for the back and the front. Even if that front section that was attached to the walk, could that be sloped? Or there also, just so there wasn't that step, that, I mean, it's a six inch step.
That is a.
Kinda small.
That is a design decision, and, and I think that's part of what, you know, we're here to, I'm glad you brought that up.
Yeah.
Uh, but that really is more of a design thing than anything else. Um, we're making sure it's compliant to come up to it, but like I said, the old gazebo is three, four, or five steps, the one in Oxford is.
I respect that, I just, I see, a six inch step, it's, it's kinda, it's, it's not a full step, it's not a, you know, it's just kinda stuck there in the middle. To me, I see it being more of a, a trip than, than a step, where you're stepping into the front of that.
It allows you to grow or establish landscaping, flowers, you know, flower beds around, around the gazebo, so.
Respect around, I'm sorry where it attaches to the sidewalk in, in the front, where you're coming up.
Yeah, and the grass wouldn't grow up over it, but there would be.
Well, that's where the sidewalk ties in, right? Doesn't the sidewalk tie into the, coming from the, from the south, heading north? Doesn't that tie into the sidewalk that's there?
Uh, we would call it the floor, the updated.
Cuz wasn't that section open?
Right here.
You see what I'm talking, yeah, where the.
Right here.
So you're saying just level that open there so that you don't have that.
They have that six inch. And I mean, this is what I was going off, so I didn't have a complete set of working plans or anything to see if that. What I assume, based on what I'm seeing, is that, is a six inch step around, a ramp and back.
I'm sorry, are you looking at the site plan, Justin, or the, or Mr. Parker?
People that are in the band. Elevation. Are you gonna have to step over this?
Are you talking about right in front of what is called the dance floor, the brick pavers?
No, cuz it's a little flat. I'm just gonna stand up.
Or there's a large.
Where do you think the rain's gonna go? Six inch step to get a little elevation for people.
Yes, I mean, we, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that's.
This elevation around, I see, but this, if that was sloped into the dance floor, just a, a six inch step, to me, this seems like it's gonna be.
Well, because the gazebo, because the gazebo bumps right up to the existing dance floor. Now you're putting a ramp in the middle of that, so now are you creating a ramp? Or a trip hazard from the floor onto that ramp, does that now require rails? Because you're, you're elevating that upward, um, so that's why I kinda took your question earlier, is as far as the ADA compliance.
I know, we, we met that, I, I, yeah, I was, I wasn't questioning.
So now, you either have to move this gazebo off of that. Dance floor area, because as it's drawn on the site plan, which everybody should've had a copy of the site plan, it's bumped right up to it.
Yeah, we kinda, yeah.
You, uh, for your permit is pulled, you got footings or, or foundations, what, you're doing a rat wall to hold the gazebo on it, or?
Uh, no, no, they are twenty-four inch, uh, poured concrete footings.
Okay, down two feet. So the, you will pull a building permit and work with our building inspector?
The, the issue that is faced is, uh, per conversation with me and Mr. Bomarito.
Oh, you say you have talked about.
Uh, many times.
Okay.
Um, and we can maybe resolve this, this time around. When you're dealing with the municipality, when you're dealing with a park, there is no. Building permit application or requirement, and this comes from the mouth of Mr. Mike Bomarito. Because of the nature of that, it is a park, okay? So, if they wanna come up with some type of special permit that we can file an inspection. So we don't have to go through what we did with the pillars, um, where we had to document pictures and this and that. Uh, yeah, absolutely no issue with that.
I'm just looking at.
Mike actually sent me a message this morning and said, it's already gone through planning, as soon as it gets through this. He said, I've already approved everything, it's ready to go.
So he will be, he will be involved in any inspections, anything?
So he's approved a twenty-four inch footing rat wall, whatever, to support the existing concrete pillars?
Yes.
Yeah, we have run it by our engineers also.
Okay.
Uh, he had a few minor comments, but in, in the end, all in all, approved as was, or as is.
There were a list of.
Buildings part two, right, but what about like electrical inspection, because there's gonna be some electricity inside this gazebo, my understanding?
Yeah, it's on the plan.
So is that, there're gonna be permits for that then, the electrical and?
Well, we have already, we've already cleared that, it would just come from the side there from the gazebo that's already been approved.
Yeah, but then there should be a further inspection on the electrical aspect of it.
As there was for the prior, uh, work done at the park.
Yeah.
But I'm just the mason, so I'm not speaking on any other aspects of.
And there's a plumbing permit.
Oh, for the fountain? So I guess as long as.
Something is a fountain, what's under the plumbing permit, or what?
There's a.
That's what I was told.
There's a.
There's electrical and plumbing.
There's a plumbing sleeve, um, left under the ground where the old, um, drinking fountain was. And Starkweather, um, and the Boy Scouts are, um, rebuilding that fountain to come back into the. And it's placed in the drawing there.
Nice, okay.
So, back to the six inch step for a moment, because it is a step, we don't have to have a handrail of any sort?
No, the handrails would be, uh, more than eighteen, eight, more than thirty-two. That's a very, that's a very, there's a lot of variations and aspects of that, but no, you would not have to have that, or that would be the discretion of the engineer. So, if the engineer that drew this would say, oh, by code, per my engineer's stamp, if we made the step this high, we would need a handrail, then that puts the liability on the engineer to make that decision.
I meant, so there's a ramp for someone to get up in a wheelchair if they had to.
Yeah.
From the backside.
I mean, I understand the step, because like even at our church, when we have a choir concert, we have to get a little podium to get our director up just a little higher, so that everybody can see him, and same thing if you have groups in there. You know, they're going to be just a little bit higher than the crowd, so the crowd will be able to see them better, because that's what I'm taking, that's why it's like that.
Yeah, so all I can really speak on that is that anything regarding a six-inch step is a preference and not a code issue, an ADA issue.
We'll consider that in the future or the design, because I can see a good reason to have that railing.
Especially if it's the same color, you know?
Right.
Study yourself stepping up in there.
Yeah.
So, you need a motion to move forward, or this is just update?
No, you need a motion.
I can make a motion to approve the plans as presented by, from the Planning Commission.
Copper roof?
Copper roof, is that what we're talking about, Ruth?
Yeah.
Or shingles, which one?
Copper roof.
Copper top roof with a copper vein, twin vein.
All right, it's your call.
Well, there's materials too that blend with.
Okay.
Would you mind if I give this to the residents to pass around and look at?
No, there's two copies, go ahead, they're yours.
That's my motion to.
Whoever wants them.
Is the other thing, is there something that reflects the Romeo heritage?
Yes.
It hasn't been chosen yet, but.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It hasn't been chosen yet.
We have a second, Madam President.
That's the reason why we fashioned it the way we did. We listened to the residents, and the residents wanted a gazebo kind of looking more historic than a modern, you know, metal pavilion.
Okay, who was our second?
Uh, just on another note, is the entrance that you see in the mock-up, which you'll see more details as we go forward, Grace Vaney opened that door to us when she came in talking to Rob Krieger, which was the artist that was, if they got the grant for the alley. And I contacted Mr. Krieger, and he is going to, he's agreed to make that metal structure that attaches to the entrance, which would be Main Street and Starkweather Alley. That's where the entrance would be, and it would be stone, and you can see that picture there. He's going to be making that metal structure. And he's done a great job on other areas. Meager, I'm sorry, I said Krieger.
So, it won't be this or?
So, we still have all local contractors working on it and finishing it.
Great.
Any other questions?
Ruth, will you consider the handrail?
Yes, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Could you call the roll?
Fowler?
Yes.
Bartholomew?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
President Poznanski?
Yes.
Question carry six zero?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. Okay, moving into our trustee appointment, our vacant seat here. We already, we already did. Okay, so I did reach out to all of the applicants, offered in an email to come speak. I did let them know that coming to speak didn't disqualify or give anybody else, disqualify them for being, putting their name in the hat. So, if there is anybody, we did have two who are away on business, and they could not make it tonight. So, I offer, I told them, well, you could write something and have somebody read it on your behalf if you'd like. Other than that, if anybody's here that is, has their name to be trustee, we are going to give them no more than five minutes to speak on their own behalf. We are trying here to, I hear your frustration, because I feel your frustration in that we don't have a trustee yet. So, I would like us to be open-minded. If we all dig in our heels where we're currently at, we're not going to get anywhere. So, we do need, at some point, to have a little give in our thinking and listen to how everybody would benefit our village as our trustee, and see if we can't get this resolved sooner than later.
Someone, someone left their iPhone on.
Uh-oh.
Ruth, is that?
Okay. You have five minutes?
Yeah, so, I already spoke, told you what I had to say. I don't know if you guys have any questions for me. I think all the names that have been thrown out are good choices, and I think I'm a good choice too. And you're probably going to ask me why I didn't run. It's not for, wasn't for lack of interest, I just, you know, I'm a busy guy, just, it wasn't my time. After the last couple of meetings, and you guys can't, you know, the names being put out, having gotten a majority vote, I just kind of took that as a calling for me to put my name in, because I've always been interested, and I do pay attention. And I think, I think I'd be good, I'd be a good trustee here, so I'm very accessible. I put in a lot of hours at Romeo Barber Shop right in town, so citizens could come and talk to me anytime, as they already do. You know, for years, people, customers come in, what's the scoop in the village, you know, and they know I, they know I'm paying attention, so. Yeah.
Thank you.
I don't know that we want to move into questions, as we don't have everyone here, and we didn't really open it up to questions to begin with, but again, it's council's purview.
I, I have a question, but I've already asked the other candidates and received their answers, so I think it's only fair that I actually ask here as well. If anyone's opposed, I won't, but I already asked the other candidates. Okay, so the same question I've asked the other candidates. If you weren't appointed, would you still stay involved, come to the meetings, be present, get more involved within the community, or the, like, the commissions and things that have been started? Would you be involved in that in any way?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'm, I've, I'm already involved with the community to an extent. I mean, I know a lot of people, a lot of people know me, and I'm not on any boards or anything yet, but I'd always be open to it, I'm always willing to help.
And if you were or weren't appointed, would you consider running in the future?
I'm planning on it, yes.
Thank you. And again, I've answered that of all the candidates and received a response. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
I'll make a motion, and we appoint.
Well, hold on, Nathan, we're not there yet. Are there any other candidates who would like to speak, or anybody speaking on candidate's behalf?
Hi, I'm speaking on behalf of Nolan Care. Since he couldn't be here today, I'm reading his letter he wrote. Dear Board of Trustees, I am ready to express my strong interest in the vacant trustee seat for the Village of Romeo Board of Trustees. My recent campaign for the position in the November election has left me even more motivated to continue serving our community. My experience, skills, and dedication make me the ideal candidate for this important role. I believe that our community has the potential to be a shining example of what can be achieved when we work together towards a common goal. As a former member of the Planning Commission, I have gained a thorough understanding of both opportunities and challenges facing our village. I believe that planning is crucial to the future success of our village. We need to plan for a Romeo that fits our vision, that helps businesses and residents prosper, and that preserves the village that we know and love. I am positive that we can achieve this by working together as a board. We must prioritize the well-being of our residents, while also ensuring that our village remains sustainable for generations to come. Through my work in starting a nonprofit, Miracle on Tilson Street, I am also deeply committed to representing some of our community's most vulnerable members. While running this charity, which helps give food and assistance to local families in need, I have become a representative for them. During meetings, events, and fundraisers, I have begun to understand the value of compassion, leadership, and collaboration. As a representative of these families, I have a responsibility to help those who need it most. I know that at all times, the Village of Romeo can come together and ensure that every member of our community has the support they need to thrive. I am proud to be a part of the effort to preserve our village's rich history and character. Through my restoration project of my historic 1878 home here in our village, I have experienced firsthand the importance of respecting and preserving our past while still building towards a better future. I am establishing my roots deep here in the village and making this town my home for many years to come. As a young person, I have often faced the challenge of proving my maturity and ability to lead, but I know that age is not a measure of commitment, dedication, or the ability to make a positive impact. I am hopeful that my maturity is shown through my actions, and that I am displaying the qualities of a respected member of this community. I am confident that my experiences and passion make me the ideal candidate for the open trustee seat. In conclusion, I am deeply committed to the Village of Romeo, and my experiences, skills, and passion make me the ideal candidate for the open trustee seat. I feel my time has come to step up and to be a leader for our village and its residents. I look forward to the opportunity to serve our community, represent the interests of all residents, and to help create a more prosperous and compassionate village. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Nolan Care.
Do we have any other candidates that would like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Lisa Hall. I am a lifelong resident of this area. I have served on many boards. I've been the director of the DEA. I, as many of you have came to the meetings, and I've watched the inability to agree on a candidate. I appreciate everyone that ran. I did not run. I do intend to run. I, I work in local government on a daily basis. I know what goes into this. I know how this works. From everything to a phone call, all the way up to capital improvement projects, to road bonds, to all of the things. I have the experience. I have an education. I have a master's degree in public administration. I've been doing this a long time. This, again, to me, is very frustrating to not, to see a board not be able to find someone to put in this place. I too feel that Nolan is a very qualified candidate. I also feel that I'm very qualified. I do not want to see this go to a special election. I did reach out. To do a special election in Washington Township, it would cost approximately $8,000. To do a special election in Ray Township, where you have no voters, but they have to have an open precinct, costs a minimum of $2,000. Bruce Township did not respond, but knowing the size and knowing the capacity of Bruce Township, I would say we could put the cost between the two, say $4,000. Look at the cost. I mean, it makes no sense. This board has to come together and find someone to put in this position. Whoever you choose, I believe any of us that have put our hats in the ring, I believe that all of us are capable of doing a great job, and I personally only want what's best for this village. I've been here all of my life. I want to see it continue to grow. I want us to be prepared. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, do we have any other candidates, or anybody on behalf of a candidate?
I just want to ask Mark a question first. Mark, do we have to fill this seat, or can it remain open until the next election?
Well, the statute says, gives you the authority to fill the seat. The statute is silent about the time within which to do that, and what happens if you don't. I've not researched that question specifically. I can just tell you, the statute does not state a timeframe within which to make the appointment. So, if I take both sides of the issue and say, well, on the one hand, the statute is silent, and so you can lurch along until the next election, I could muster support for that. The other side of the issue is, the statute governing general law villages also says that unless you choose otherwise, you can have a lesser number of trustees, but you have to do that by ordinance, and there's a process for that. So, and you haven't done that, which that doesn't factor in, other than to say that the statute provides that you'll have seven trustees, one of whom will be the president. Historically, up until maybe 20 or, well, probably 30 or 40 years ago, I'm going to date myself, the president didn't have a vote unless there was a tie. The law changed. So, the law says you have seven trustees, so I can make an argument that, not that you're doing anything unlawful, but that you're not fulfilling your responsibility by constituting the board with seven trustees. But the statute is silent on it, and without researching to see if there are any court opinions on it, which there may or may not be, and whether there are any that relate to villages, there may be some relative to cities, where there tends to be more litigation, or maybe even townships in terms of appointments or lack of appointments. I can only tell you that there can be an argument made on both sides, but that the statute does not state a time within which that seat has to be filled. So, it continues to be muddy water, I guess.
As we go forward from here, putting out our motions, I would ask at the table, consider each person and just that single name, and weigh in your head whether that person is qualified, and whether that person would do well in the seat and do the duty to the village, and not think otherwise on political affiliations, and that we would just solely look at that name, weighing, will this person fulfill this seat appropriately? So, with that, I give the floor to a motion.
I'd like to, I'd like to make the motion that we appoint Nolan Care to the Board of Trustees here.
Support it.
Catherine?
Bartholomew?
Yeah, I wanted to just have a little discussion here for a second. I'd looked into the 2018 election, where we brought Randy Seidel on. The reason we brought Randy Seidel on was because there was no fourth person running. Zach, Bob Hart, myself, ran, I guess I'll call it unopposed. So, there was no fourth elector to choose from, so that's why we had to pick someone else. So, just want to clarify that, because I didn't realize that last month when we were discussing it.
Okay, do we have any discussion regarding Nolan Care, whose name is at the table? Hearing none, could you?
I was going to say, just his qualities, and everybody's stood up and talked about him are just outstanding. And I think that he'd be a fine member of this board. Even people running against him are saying, you know, he'd be qualified.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, could you call the roll, Cliff Trapp?
Bartholomew?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
President Poznanski?
Yes.
Parker?
No.
Fowler?
No.
No.
Motion carries four-two.
We have a sixth trustee? Okay, moving on into our new business. I apologize for sitting so long. We have our resolution for I F T application. They are requesting the twelve-year abatement. Do you have a motion or a discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the I F T for L and L products.
Second.
Okay.
Before you vote, if I could just mention, Clark Trapp did provide me with the proposed resolution and there are some typographical items that I can address with her. They do not affect the substance. But one thing, just so we don't run, or again, I apologize for the, just so the village doesn't run into problems in the initial whereas paragraph in the second line, it says the Board of Trustees by resolution establish L and L products, industrial development district, that was not unique to L and L. And so my recommendation on the substantive change in that whereas clause is that it read, this Board of Trustees by resolution reestablish, delete L and L products, reestablish in industrial development district, and then continue with the subsequent paragraphs, just so there's no confusion, because your industrial development district encompasses your entire industrial area. So you don't want to start to parse that. It could cause problems.
So Matt, can we have that? You made the motion.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make that part of my motion.
Okay, I'll second it.
What he said.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Thank you, yes.
Mr. Clark, would you continue your mic on just for the folks at home?
Could you call the roll, please?
Edwards?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Bartholomew?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
President Poznanski?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Motion carries six-zero.
Thank you for redoing business here in the village.
Thank you.
We're gonna have to consult you.
Thanks, Steve.
Yes, if I may, though, on that resolution, though, I intentionally left the period of the amount of years blank. And I'm sorry, I didn't catch that in time. That was not part of the original motion.
I clicked the motion. Motion's for twelve years.
Okay.
I was gonna say, do you want to redo a vote? Or does anybody want to change it? Or which way would you rather go?
Well, we can either rescind or just do another motion based on the timeframe. Matt Edwards would have to rescind.
Just do another motion.
Yep, just based on the timeframe would be sufficient.
And we'll all vote, just make it all very clear.
Yeah, I'll make another resolution to make the I F T that we just voted on for L and L products good for a time period of twelve years.
And include the verbiage?
And include Mr. Clark's verbiage.
Yeah, that's part of the original motion. Okay.
Would you like a roll call on that one also?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yeah.
Russell?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Bartholomew?
Yes.
President Poznanski?
Yes.
Motion carries six-zero. Thank you.
Okay, we move into our event permit request. M J C is asking for the closure of the alleyway.
Is this the one we just, we just opened, right?
Correct. They're asking for the week. However, the event is happening the twenty-seventh. The sale will be the twenty-seventh to the thirtieth.
Three days and they're asking for a full seven?
Um, the setup will be the, tent setup will be the twenty-fourth to the twenty-sixth, and then the sale is the twenty-seventh to the thirtieth. So they're asking from twenty-four to thirty.
On the copy of this permit, they did not indicate whether they would be using electric. It doesn't say yes or no.
I think if they are, it will be of their own property, so it didn't need to be part of it. It won't be any electric from village property of the alley. So if they use electric-
So would they still be required to check no? And so we know it's not dismissed?
True.
Could we make a standard procedure in the future, like, just so we know they didn't miss it?
Yeah, I think it's just an oversight, but yes.
Okay. But we don't think they are at this point.
I don't believe so.
Okay.
If anything, because the tents are set up on their own property also. The closure of the alley was, in their eyes, for safety of the people in the shopping.
So they want to close, they don't plan on using it, the alley. They just want it closed?
Um, if it is closed, I do believe that the D D A is planning to use it. Isn't the D D A putting up other things within the alley?
I think it said they close it for safety purposes.
Well, this is M J C asking. This isn't D D A.
No, but she asked if anything was going to be put in it from M J C. No, but I'm not, to say no would not also be the truth. I do believe they're planning on putting something there, just not M J C.
Wouldn't they have to come and ask for closure of the alley then? I think that's included in this.
Well, then, yeah, I guess they would have marked, yes, we're, we're using the streets. They marked no.
Yeah, because they're not using it. They just want it closed. And then if it is closed, the D D A is going to use it to put in, I don't recall what we talked about. Okay. Right.
So I'll make a motion. Can we approve this application for the M C J for the timeframe of the requesting?
M J C.
M J C, sorry.
Support.
You have discussion? Are we good with roll call?
Yeah, I don't see why we're gonna close it for a week after we just opened it for the reasons we opened it, you know, for the traffic flow into the area. And now we're closing it for a week seems like a, to me, to my mind, it seems like a long time for a, a short event.
Yeah, I, I can agree with that, and I think there's got to be a way to, to set up your event so that it is safe, because there's also the other alley coming along Busheims, so does that one need to be closed? Because cars come in through that way, so are you looking at both alleys? Or is this just a way to get the alley closed so the D D A can use it without having to ask again? The D D A is not using it.
Oh, okay. The alley?
Yes.
Because this-
They had outlets put down beside their house or outside of the building, so no electricity. Not from the village.
No, sorry, I missed-
We actually had specifically said we're not. We don't want- We don't want to use for-
Okay, I apologize. I misspoke. It is, somebody's using it. They're, if it's closed, they're putting something in it. I remember talking about it at the meeting.
Alley open for traffic, so retail is that. So this is a one-off business, choosing to do this.
Okay.
Not supported by the D D A. So my concern is if this one-off business is asking for the alley to be closed for safety, but then someone else is going to use it, I'd really like to keep our communication and our intentions honest and forthright. And I, I'm starting, I don't know anybody in these businesses and I, I don't appreciate the feeling of someone trying to take advantage or kind of sidestep. Well, can I speak for a minute?
Well, I mean, yeah, but this isn't a D D A thing, though, right?
No, no, I just want to explain. Is this your application? Is, is she here? No, she could not come to that.
So in the D D A minutes, there is, it is addressed, kind of. Village Romeo event permit, the suggested name. Discussion ensued. Event permit will be pursued by business requesting alley closure if desired. No board action was taken. So that is from, straight from their minutes regarding this topic.
Yeah, we're not a fan of the alley being closed, but at the same time, with this event going on in her parking lot, I am concerned about safety. People driving up and down and kids, and that, that does scare me a little bit. And I agree, but I don't think we should be closing the alleyway to allocate the one business to- Right, but the problem is the alley is right connected, is connected to her parking lot. And about a month ago, they did have somebody drive down that alley too fast.
Just to give you an idea of how fast they go, they were gonna go up the alley. They didn't realize it was closed and the kid got so far and he spun around and he knocked their steps off.
And I agree, but I think that's why I'm referring to opening, closing, opening, closing. It's a, it's a mess.
Mm-hmm.
Right. We open it as a street and we leave it alone because people don't know what they're doing to drive down.
And you made a good point about the back alley, too.
Right, there's two alleyways into that.
Cheap to weigh in? Sure, why not? If, what I'm hearing is correct, I think what they want to do is they want to close it because they're putting up a tent in the back of their building where it connects to the two alleyways. Okay, so if you gotta close down one alleyway, you gotta close down the other alleyway, because if you're doing it for safety, you gotta close both of them. If you close off both of them, then you're preventing any kind of access to any of the other buildings that are in that area. We just opened up that alleyway. I'm sorry that they have property that's on an alleyway, but I, I really don't think there's a necessity to close that alley.
Point of order? Okay, to the point at hand, we have a motion in a second.
Sounds like I need to change my motion. Because it sounds like we don't want the alleyway closed. So I'll make the motion that they go-
You would like to rescind it?
Yeah, I'll rescind it and remake my motion to allow them to do their thing, but without the closure of that.
Well, we just would not take no action.
We don't have to deny the permit, is what you're saying?
I'm sorry, I'm just stepping back a minute. Bartholomew is rescinding his vote. Edwards, are you rescinding your support?
Yes.
They can still do the activity in their parking lot in back of the building. So that would be my new motion is to allow them to do their thing.
I don't think we have to motion anything. That's their property, right?
No action taken and-
Would you like us to deny the permit with the alley closure? Let's make a motion appropriate to that.
I make a motion to deny the village event permit for the M J C Marketplace alley closure.
And then any future permits, could we have them check no, just so we make sure it's not an oversight?
Like even at the bottom where it says barricades, they put four, but then they didn't mark yes or no if they needed barricades.
Right, that's what I mean. I, I'm not, clearly I am a detail-oriented person.
We, we are in discussion of, Clark Trapp, to adjust the event permit application form.
Yes.
So that should be coming soon. Roll call?
Change my page. Parker?
Yes.
Fowler?
Are we denying it?
Yeah, yes.
To deny, yes.
Yes or no?
We're still with that motion.
We lost them.
President Poznanski?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Bartholomew?
Yes.
Okay. To deny. Motion carries to deny.
Do our downtown people come in front of their, their board in order to present the activities which might be happening? And you come to us, or is that just the CD back there?
What are you saying?
This, yeah, the D D A.
So what was the question?
Do they come in twenty-year board first before they come to this council? You guys like-
We have, we have our committees, just like you do, so they do discuss like our committee meetings.
So recommendation on you for, to, to save us the-
Well, that was in the minutes that I read.
And we have nothing to do with that. Yeah, but if they choose to come and ask for it.
Okay, all right.
Well, and that's where in the D D A minutes, I read that the event permit will be pursued by the business requesting the alley closure and that no board action was taken, so we at least had that to address it. But yes, we cannot deny somebody a permit request. Uh, moving into our Starkweather peace pole placement. So some of these peace poles are being placed within our property, so that's why it's coming to our board to approve these placements.
Hi, I'm Grace Vinay from Starkweather. I'm the secretary. So we started this project last fall. It's through a grant through the Michigan Municipal League. They are four-by-four womanized poles. They're eight foot tall. They're gonna be sunk two feet. We have to get Miss Dig involved. Boy Scouts are sinking them. So we've had twelve artists and numerous students, I'm not sure exactly how many, I think over twenty, from the Romeo High School have been painting these poles. So they're, they're very colorful. They're themed with designs from nature, mostly. Animals, flowers, or just design work. And we were looking around to see where to put them to try to stay in the downtown district because that is part of the grant from the Michigan Municipal League. So, I'm sorry, this is kind of a rough map, but some of the locations we looked at were Kesar, on their lawn, that would be the northernmost one. It wouldn't be on the boulevard. It would be inside their lawn property, I guess you'd say. The Chamber of Commerce, again, it would be near their building. In Starkweather, it would be in the alleyway, one in front of our carriage house, and then one in front of, on the south side, in front of Main Street. So it'd be in the grassy, planted area. The other location would be, there's a parking lot behind Four, east of Four Corner Diner. There's a couple of planting areas there. These poles, because they're just, you know, they're skinny, so they look kind of nice when they're near other things. It enhances them, like lawn art, you know, that you'd have in your garden art that you'd have. So there's a, a parking lot there and there's a walkway to Thirty-Two Mile. And there's two planting areas. So one of the planting areas we thought would look nice, plus it's visible from Thirty-Two Mile. Parker Alley, and there's already the, the sculpture there from Sarah Casper. So she's working, her and three other artists have worked on one of the poles. She'd like that pole to be somewhere in Parker Alley. She didn't care what the location was. So it could be close to the sidewalk, or it could be farther back. It's the best locations that we thought. And then the last one, we were looking at the crosswalk area just south of the P N C parking lot. So there's a crosswalk there and then there's a, there's a grassy planted area to the left of it. And I looked to see where the snow is plowed, and that's not where the snow usually gets built up. Because I was hoping, you know, that they wouldn't get plowed under and broken. So anyway, that was, that was our recommendations of where to put them. And I wanted some feedback from this group.
Are they, are they opposition to where they can go into dirt or will we have to cut through some concrete and asphalt?
Oh, dirt.
Okay, so it's all dirt?
All dirt.
How tall are they?
They're eight foot, but they would be two foot buried.
It'll be six foot.
Six foot tall when you're done, yeah.
So ultimately, would they be on private property or village property?
Some of us, yes.
Well, Chamber is private property. Kesar, I'm not sure.
Well, it's library property.
Library property.
It's library, yes.
Yeah. Looks like everything else would be village property.
Do you have any pictures of them?
Mm-hmm.
Can I see? And are there, it doesn't look like there's anything going towards the southeast section of the-
Parker Alley.
Parker Alley.
Parker Alley.
It's a really good alley.
By the, by the sushi place.
By the old, yeah.
Yeah, I guess I was thinking a little farther south, but that's all right.
Well, I have to stay within the district, the village district.
And then who would maintain them?
Well, we would, but I, I don't know how much maintenance would really be required. I mean- Well, we would, but I, I don't know how much maintenance would really be required, I mean, they're, they're on womanized wood. They're gonna be encased in cement in the ground. They are painted, they were primed, they're painted with outdoor paint and they're varnished. So they won't last forever, but they hopefully will last for a long time. And.
My question off that is, after they start to deteriorate, paint chips, are you guys coming back to do the refishing, touch up on the painting and maintaining them?
That could happen, or they could be removed at some point too.
Change of.
Yeah, I mean, and they're not metal, you know, they're wood, so it won't last forever, I, you know, I'd say they probably last as long as a, maybe a deck would last, so.
Something pops into my mind, as I know we did the other, uh, art piece and the Parker Alley, and now we're looking at some poles. I, I guess before we move too far into all this, I would like to see, and maybe that's working with the DDA or something, like a finalize or something, like of each alley or, or section of town. Where, where are we planning on envisioning this, you know, five, 10 years down the road, so we're not just randomly, cause something comes up, we get a grant, we get some cool stuff, we're just gonna pop them here, here, and here, and here. How does it work with the whole feel or the, what maybe the DDA is visioning happening downtown, you know, if that makes any sense, you know?
Yes, yeah.
We're just gonna keep popping different things in?
Right, um. Are you Joan Den? No? Joan Den? Cause I just have gotten an email from her, from the DDA, yeah, I've been in, I've been in, uh, communication, uh, with Elizabeth since the beginning of this. And then, you know, we started it last fall and you didn't have the committee, but now you do. So, um, Joan just reached out to me and I want to work with her on the placement in the alleys.
And then if I could just ask you another question, and thank you for entertaining my questions.
Sure.
Because I obviously am relatively new, so if there's any history to this, um, I would like to know, so you applied and got the grant?
For, it's for a community art project.
Okay.
Um, for $500.
Okay, and it was Starkweather who applied and got the grant?
Yes, yes.
So was this brought to the council previously, or is, is this the first time the council is?
I think it's the first time we've seen it.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think we're working with the DDA, I think that's.
We've been working with the DDA on this, yeah.
And that's where these locations came from, coming to the DDA, they talked about where they would want them around town.
Mm-hmm.
In their district.
Seems like you should. Being the design committee.
It was, we talked about it at the la, at the most recent DDA meeting. You weren't there.
Who, who is Joan?
I have no clue who Joan is.
I don't know, but that's who Elizabeth put me in touch with.
I, I can, I can kind of see your concern, like where are we going with things?
Yeah.
Because, not that I don't believe in the project, but it was pursued before approved and then. Like, what is the vision of our downtown? What is, what is our, um, atmosphere and what, what is our, do you have a planned intentional downtown? It's something I'd like to say.
Well, we have a master plan, but I don't think it includes anything like this.
Well, it, it, at the very least, it addresses bringing more art into the town, it doesn't specify.
Yeah.
Well, I may could make a motion. That's what we're looking for.
We're, we are wanting to present an overall design plan.
I, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I said, we're actually putting together an overall design scheme so that we can, cause we're very interested in promoting art everywhere around, how to put in the patterns.
I don't need all this.
And, and who is we? Who do you?
The DDA.
The DDA, okay. Yeah, okay.
We'd be very interested in engaging, absolutely.
Can we table until DDA reviews?
So they're peace poles, they're not the traditional poles with, that have welcome or peace on each side, so.
They're more peaceful images.
Okay.
It's in your minutes.
I get it. Cause, um, I thought it was something different, alright. Thank you.
Anybody wants to, this is a high school.
Might as well.
So there's different students that are from, from portions of the.
Interesting.
It's a great idea, but again, it's not a.
Yeah, I kinda picture them as four by four womanized poles, yeah, just like you'd build a, a deck with.
I've seen them, I've seen them on the, like, Facebook.
So I'd like to make a motion, will we allow this?
Oh, I saw, thanks. Support?
So I'd say call Ms. Dig for sure.
While they're voting on approving.
Can you come to our next DDA meeting?
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, can we continue our business?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I did go to the last one.
Yeah, we were, April 3rd.
Yes, I can.
Okay, we had a motion and we had a second, what was your motion? Could you say it again, please?
My motion was to allow this to happen.
Could you be a little more specific?
As designed with the locations as to where they are.
The peace poles?
The peace poles.
The five located with, um, within village property?
Yes.
Could you take a roll when you're ready?
Bartholomew?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Fowler?
No.
Parker?
No.
Russell?
No.
President Poznanski?
Yes.
The vote is three, three, which is a tie, motion fails.
I'd like to make a motion to table until reviewed by the DDA with a complete plan of the alleyways in the downtown for placement.
Second.
Mr. Parker, if I may, can we add, um, to that complete plan about, um, maintenance of the poles and should they need to be removed? Who's the decision maker and, and who bears that cost? I just wanna be clear, cause if we take out a pole and then someone. From Starkweather or DDA, you know what I'm saying? I think there's to be a clear plan all the way through.
The maintenance aspects.
So maintenance, or if they, if we assume ownership as the village, then they fall on us as to maintain the ones that are on the village property?
I just think that needs to be clarified, so that there's no confusion.
So if we could get something written?
Adjust your motion.
I'll adjust to include a maintenance plan.
I'll second that.
Ready?
Yep, roll call.
Parker?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Bartholomew?
No.
President Poznanski?
Yes.
Motion carries five, one.
Okay, well, so you have something to work on and let me know when it's ready, so we can get on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have our Arbor Day proclamation. Um, the tree board is working on the Arbor Day event for April 28th. If you would like, make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
My second.
Motion is. What's your motion?
To approve the proclamation.
To approve the Arbor Day proclamation.
And do we do this every year?
Yeah.
We do, okay.
For the specific date.
Gotcha.
You do it all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Would you like me to read it?
Yes, we would love to hear you read it.
Okay, we have a proclamation by the president of the Village of Romeo, Michigan for Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable source, resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and beauty to our community. And whereas trees in our village increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and provide character to our community. And now therefore I, Macon Poznanski, president of the Village of Romeo in the county of McComb, and by, and on behalf of the village council, do hereby proclaim, April 28th, 2023, as Arbor Day in the Village of Romeo. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further urge all citizens to plant trees in order to promote the well-being of this generation and future generations to come. Dated this 20th day of April, 2023.
I'll forget to get DT to stop cutting down the center of the trees.
Well, that's why we have an ordinance where we don't plant in the right of way. So going, at some point, we didn't have that, so going forward, that's where, anyways, okay. Our police phone system. We all had the letter, I don't know if you've had it, obviously had a chance to read it, um, our phone system is broke.
Yes, uh, the, the administrative lines are still working, they're still coming through here. Uh, anybody who calls the 586-752-3587 number will still reach the Romeo Police Department. Uh, right now, our 911 lines are completely dead. Uh, everything has been transferred over to the McComb County Sheriff for the time being. Uh, they received the calls and then they either contact us or they dispatch us directly over the radio, depending on the priority of the call. Uh, we're also still getting calls about the fire and EMS and, and dispatching those through, uh, the radio and toning them out. This has been happening for, for probably about a year now, that this phone system has been dying. Uh, as I put in the letter, uh, the county is looking to become the last county in the state of Michigan to go over to a fiber network, uh, which allows for next gen 911 capabilities, which would allow video, uh, texting, uh, pictures. A redundancy in the lines, cause we're, right now, we're, uh, working on archaic stuff, which is old copper lines that are just basically old phone lines. Uh, that's what we're set up for right now, the new system won't go into effect for, I would, I would estimate probably two years. Uh, the county's looking at a new solution, uh, to go to a, the ATOS people that I was, that I have talked about in the letter to you. I reached out to them, uh, they kinda blew me off a little bit, uh, they're more concerned with getting the county going before they're worrying about us. I explained our situation, said, hey, I can't wait for the county to do what they're gonna do. Uh, then reached out to the people that we had our last system with, which, uh, which was Viper through AT&amp;T. Uh, and got a quote, had a quote from a couple of years ago, but didn't wanna do anything with it because we're planning on going to this next gen 911. And knew we'd have to upgrade anyways. So I waited the two years, hopefully everything was gonna work out, but the Band-Aids failed and here we are. Uh, so the new quote that I got at 4:30 this afternoon, uh, was a little bit more than the previous quote from 2020 because everything costs more now. They are telling me that e, even if we do this right now, uh, they're looking probably about June, but if I give them the okay, uh, they'll put us on an emergency situation where they will put us in as soon as there's an opening.
What's the, you, you said you got a new quote today?
Yeah, I, I gave it to President Poznanski.
Yes.
Yeah, it's the 174.
It was at the table when you walked in?
Two years ago was 160,000, this year it's 174,000. Uh, they do have financing options, the last time we bought it, uh, back in 2014, we financed it on a five-year program, I believe it was. Uh, I talked to the salesperson and she was working on getting that kinda estimate to me. So they do have those options, I don't know what interest rate or anything they're talking about, it might be better to just buy it right off the bat. You know, it's, it's something that's dire, it's something that's necessary. You know, to keep our, to keep our police here in the Village of Romeo, one of the things that everybody likes about the Village of Romeo. I don't like relying on somebody else right now, but I have no choice.
Takes more time too, I would imagine.
Yeah.
Is this, is this worked into the budget somewhere?
This was not worked into any budget at all, this was a catastrophic event, basically.
We knew it was coming and we didn't plan.
So even though we, and I'm not directing at you, but we knew it was, two, two years or so, we've known this was gonna be an issue?
We knew it was gonna be an issue eventually, probably in another two years from now. I didn't think that my equipment would break prior to that. Completely break.
Well, they got the quote in 2020, so.
Yeah, yeah. But instead of buying something that I was probably, might have to replace in 2024 to update to this fiber stuff, I figure we'll wait, keep putting Band-Aids on what we have, but.
We're out of Band-Aids.
I'm out of Band-Aids.
I'd like to make the motion and then we move forward with this, number 174, 37.22 cents. So that our department has that 101 capability.
And I will look into the financing options, because that's usually, that's how we, you know, I don't, I don't do big purchases a lot. Uh, so when we do do the cars, I always try to spread out the money over a couple of years.
Uh, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, um, as a matter of discussion, uh, clerk trap and myself have spoken about this, there is money in the general fund to cover it, obviously. But there are financing options and we said, uh, just really quick, when you handed me with the extra, that depending on the financing and what that would cost, if we have the money to front it, we might as well do that if we can save ourselves something through financing. Um, and going forward, our plan would be to start saving for the next phone system. Um, putting a line item in our budget this year, uh, so that we don't run into this, so that when Band-Aids are needed, well, there shouldn't be Band-Aids needed because we'll have money in, in an account set aside, so this would be our first step into, um, planning for the future here. So, um, we might need to take the hit right now in our general fund, but thankfully we have that and going forward, we will, um, start budgeting appropriately for this item.
I agree.
I appreciate that approach, cause had we done it two years ago, it would've been $14,000 loss. So absolutely, I would rather take the hit and be done, we've already overpaid.
Okay, um, if there's any more discussion?
You answered it.
We will take roll?
Mm-hmm. Bartholomew?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
President Poznanski?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Motion carries six, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We move into our fee schedule update, this is something, um, that has been requested from, um, our DPW. We're removing a few words here as we do not ourselves do curb cuts anymore, however, you still need your permit and infected.
So then shouldn't they remove if done by contractor? Cause you're removing if done by DPW.
Yep, we can strike that from it too. For your meter repair, that would go up a few dollars from 65 to 85. Uh, our emergency shut-off will also increase by a little bit from 160 to 175.
Does that cover the actual cost?
That would be, I was gonna say, that's a question for you, depending on what you're working on, how long it takes, dropping what you're doing to get over there and.
Well, emergency shut-off is considered $50.
Right.
So it does cover, basically covers the guys overtime.
And it's, it's, um, 175 flat fee, but if the guys are there like three hours?
The automatic, in the union contract, they automatically get paid four hours.
So this 175 will cover that?
Yes.
Okay.
Whether they come out for 10 minutes or not, it's four hours of, in order to.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure the fee's covering.
Mm-hmm.
You know, same with the meter repair. As long as the fee covers it. I make a motion, we approve the service fee schedule as presented.
One second.
With that one additional correction.
With the removal of if done by contractor.
Okay.
The, if done by contractor, wasn't that a $50 fee for inspection though? The if done by contractor, wasn't that a $50 fee for inspection then?
So we're leaving in the $50 permit fee in inspection?
Yes.
That'll stay, but just who?
Yeah, because we don't do the curb cuts anymore because before it was just a cut for them to remove the whole curb. But now they have the capability to do horizontal cuts. If we do not, we don't have a $50,000 off. So we don't, we don't do it anymore.
Why don't we have $50,000 or $700?
Okay, can we do an all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have our IT contract, services contract in going.
Make a motion real quick to go past 10 o'clock if needed. I'll make a motion to go past 10 o'clock if needed.
I'll second. All in favor of going past 10 o'clock? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
None. Okay, our IT service. In looking through our stuff to our contracts to make sure we're up to date and following everything and getting things on our agendas when they need to be, we noted that our IT contract actually, on page six at the top, the duration was from, was 39 months from February of 2019 till April of '22. So this contract is up as of April of '22. So put this on here to request going out for RFP.
Is that a motion? Or do you want a motion?
Second.
Motion.
I'll second your request for going out for RFP.
Okay.
Whose motion was that, Parker?
Her motion, I second it.
Oh.
Okay.
And they're currently just on a month-by-month?
Yes.
Okay.
Any's having, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. We had part-time office position discussion. This was requested by me. Trustee Russo.
Yes, so I had discovered there's a part-time office position being advertised for the village office. And I wanted a little more information about that, just to make sure that we're being budget conscious, are we being time conscious, like what is the purpose of the position? Because it's my understanding now that the positions we have are not working five days a week, but yet we want to add another person. And have we done a time study to make sure that we're efficient in our timing? And so I just, I'm curious to know whoever can answer all those questions.
Well, we've always had a part-timer position here. Actually, the last time we had a part-timer, it was Caroline Miller, and she was on the budget as a full-time with benefits, but after winning the election, that position went away. We have a temporary part-timer right now in the office, so therefore the budget is, we're way, 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 way under budget, not utilizing the full-time pay and the benefits that went along with that position as it is outlined under my budget.
What is the position?
It's just a part-time office staff assistant.
Responding, responsible to who?
Responsible to both President Paznanski and I.
Do we have a job description?
Well, the job description is posted. I have that here.
So it's, okay, I saw that.
Yeah, it's exactly as it is posted on there. Like I said, currently, we have a temporary person filling that position at this time.
So this was a full-time position. This position came in when, Catherine, two, three years ago?
At least in 2019, '20.
Okay, as a full-time position with benefits and did answer to the clerk and did many other job duties than what we're proposing currently.
Yes.
Since this person moved into a elected office, this person will be doing part-time, no longer receiving benefits, so we've cut that in half and will not be doing any duties of the elected officials going forward. So this will be more front of the house. It's a plan, one step into the next plan of, as we have Cindy retiring in the next couple of years, this person is coming in part-time to learn the job to, in the hopes of transitioning into that step, into that seat.
I just think it's a really, a bad idea to have two bosses. Because now you've got a part-time person with two different people throwing things at that one part-time person.
Well, we could say that they would be answerable to the clerk, but ultimately, I mean, there's, as the president would still have the authority either way. So you're still kind of have two bosses that way. I mean, you want to just put it as the clerk?
I would prefer that because I, I think that people with two bosses, they usually end up quitting pretty quickly because they get swamped from both sides.
Something we can look at then, actually we table it for now.
Well, it is in the budget, though. This board did approve this at a full-time position, actually, at the last budget in the last.
Yeah, Catherine said we're way under budget, so.
Yeah, we were under budget, but that's probably because we didn't pay that bill. It happened at the same time.
And I would hate to, if this is the discussion of the council, I would hate to bring somebody on and then take it, you know, offer him a job and they do it for the next couple of months and then take it away at budget meetings, so.
I make a motion, we move forward with this position?
I'd support that.
My, my concern is that the clerk is not working five days a week as it is. So if there is an issue with time and getting things done, perhaps you could work five days a week or perhaps let go of some of the extra committees and meetings and things that take you out of the office. I think maybe a time study for all of the crew to understand where the time is going, who's doing what, because it's also my understanding that people are not cross-trained. So if one person's gone, nobody else can step up and answer a question. So we're not running real efficient to begin with. And, and nobody even answers the phone, in all honesty. When you call there, you have to go through the whole recording to get somebody. So if we're gonna add somebody, I would really like a person to answer the phone. And I would really like to see a time study of where the time goes and why is it necessary and to have people work full-time. I, I can't support, even though it's in the budget, there were a lot of things that weren't in the budget that we've paid out.
$170,000 for a phone system.
$174,000 for a phone, $14,000 more, you know, than two years ago.
I would like to point out, though, that President Paznanski just said she's not doing elected official duties. This is a position that's been in the office for many years already. And, you know, the staff, I'm gonna relay this to you because the staff tells me over and over and over again that you guys here at the board level makes decisions about something, you guys have no, you guys are not there, you have no idea what's going on. We're a village, we don't have departments. We have one person taking care of a laundry list of items, we have the next person taking care of a laundry list of items. There's a lot of gaps in between, between all of our duties, all of our elected duties, all of the, we have three elected and two other office people.
Mm-hmm.
And that's it. So, I mean, if you want a time study, you're more than welcome to come in and see what's going on. I am cross-trained, I do backdoom a lot of the items for.
So Cindy's gone, you can answer the questions that she would take?
Yeah, and I, I can create permits. But then that puts my job duties, and then if there's somebody calls with a cemetery question, well, I have to put them on the back burner then. Well, and then you wonder why nobody's answering the phones because, you know, it's, you guys are not there. The staff is very insanely frustrated with this board because you guys are not there and yet you're gonna dictate from this table once a month how they can do their jobs when they're telling you right now how they need to do their jobs and the tools that they need to do their jobs.
You're assuming I didn't do research on this or ask questions?
I don't, you weren't in the office, you weren't in the office, and I can, if I go to the staff tomorrow, they're gonna tell me you were there reviewing their job performance?
I never said I was in the office.
Well, that's, they, they invite you guys all the time, that's what I'm saying.
Nobody's ever invited me.
The, the staff is always inviting the trustees and welcoming the trustees to come into the building to see what's going on.
I'm sorry, I missed the invitation. Could you reforward it?
Sure, definitely, we'll reforward that to you.
Thank you. So my point is.
I agree with Shelley, in what you're saying in looking at a time study and ways to do an election, because I, I think that would only help with what you're just saying, Catherine, that we've got a laundry list of stuff for a certain staff member to do. Well, if we have a professional come in that does a time study that looks at.
Who's gonna pay for that?
Efficiencies.
Who's paying for that?
If I could finish.
We're way under budget with the position.
Better work, you know, get it more efficient. And if they come and say, yeah, well, this, this, and this, and yeah, maybe we need to add a part-time person. And we're not just throwing money at something that we don't know 100%.
Right.
We're an office of like five, six people.
I trust it. And it's operated that way for decades.
Yes.
In previous administration.
With that part-time person. And you're talking about, you know, as if there was like 50, 60 people or, you know, it's just five or six people that work together. I don't think you need time studies.
We go back to Mary Ann and Mike, and back then, how were they able to do it with less staff?
It's not about trust, Nathan, it's about making sure we're being efficient. It, it has nothing to do with trust.
Well, I still trust you know what they need.
It's, it's good business sense to make sure you're being efficient, that you're spending the dollars efficiently. And who knows? What if that time study comes back and says, that person shouldn't be part-time, they should be full-time, and here's why? Okay, now we know. No one's denying that they might need help, but to be efficient and to do our homework to know what it is we really need, instead of just, like Justin said, okay, let's do this, let's do that. Because if that person was full-time, why do we only need them part-time now? What happened? Why aren't they asking for a full-time person? So it's just doing your homework, it's good business.
Well, at that time that the person was full-time, there was more duties of elected officials. So in cutting that out, that's how we cut it down to part-time.
Mm-hmm.
So how did you cut out duties of elected officials?
I suggested to the clerk that we get paid to do our duties and that we will do our duties that we ran for and that we will not have assistance.
Okay.
And that should we actually be in the, in the office five days a week for 40 hours and we can't come to the fulfillment of our duties, at that time, we would look at assistance.
I, I agree 100%. I, I don't think I can look a resident in the eye in this village and say, you're right, you know, some of your officials, elected or not, don't work 40 hours a week, but yeah, we're adding another person to the mix without being able to say why. Here's what we know, here's why.
In the Village of Romeo, those who are qualified as a full-time employee for benefits are only required a minimum of 32 hours. 32 hours has been designated a long time ago in the Village of Romeo as a full-time paid position with full benefits, not 40. That is why we were closed for four days, a lot of staff was four days.
It's sad that you want to do the bare minimum.
I'm not saying that, please don't put words in my mouth. I am just stating that this is where we're at right now.
Well, we do, and that's how we're open five days a week, is that we have staggered staff and.
We have staggered staff, but then we go one day without a building director, then one day without permits, then that's fine.
But you said you can do permits.
Right, but then I, I was told that I have to do my elected duties, so that's not my elected duty. I have to do my elected duties, and if we're absent a building director, then we're absent a building director because.
What's a building director do?
Does all the permits, and she's a zoning administrator who takes care of all the planning and zoning items and all the pre-plan meetings.
Just a motion.
And then her.
The process shouldn't stop. That's, that's where it should stop.
That's my point, we should be able to support each other and know.
To be sufficient, that's where you're.
It's an office of five to six people. You're, you're gonna pay for somebody to come in and do this time study, and you're gonna.
Well, right, I would like to know the parameters of that study, and do we, we have to go out for bid because that it's a professional service, so now we're gonna go out for bid for this office study.
That's if it's a continual service, not a.
Pardon me?
That's if it's a continual professional service.
No, it's a professional service, we'd have to go out for bid because we can't be biased on who we choose, so.
It's gonna delay the hiring.
Does anybody have a RFP that we can design for that then and pay for that?
We can pay for it because we've saved a ton of money with this position to begin with.
Then why can't we give the office the staff assistance that they are asking for?
It's not that we can't, it's that we are responsible for being able to efficiently run a community and a budget.
Right, but you guys are running it from a table at a meeting a couple of hours a week, you're not there understanding what is going on.
Okay, we have, let's, we're not getting anywhere. Let's take our, we have a motion on the floor with support.
Exactly. So why?
I'm sorry, Nate, can you repeat your motion, please?
Motion that we go through that we allow the office staff to hire this person as a part-time helper?
Well, we.
Support.
I don't, I don't even think that needs a motion.
No, it, it really doesn't. Because being that it is in the budget, we do have the authority to do it. What we wanted to discuss it, however, if there's a different direction that we're gonna go, again, I would hate to hire somebody in, in essentially leading them on that this is gonna go somewhere when come June with our budget, this money is taken away, now their job is gone. So I really would not want to hire somebody. So if we would like to go a different direction, I would like to know it now.
I, I gotta agree with Shelley in looking at efficiency moving forward, so, and if that means not hiring or hiring more, you know, that, that's what I would like, I'd like to see that.
So we will look into a time study and come back at the next meeting with proposals? That sounds fair? Okay.
Nate, or, well, we still have a motion and a support on the floor. Are we rescinding or are we acting on the motion?
Act on the motion.
Okay, you can call roll.
Bartholomew?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Parker?
No.
Russell?
No.
President Paznanski?
No.
Fowler?
No.
Motion fails.
And Clerk Trap, if I may add, your presentation and how you approach this with the staff in the office will be key as to building a community. It's not that they're not supported, and it's not that we don't know what they're doing, it's that we are charged with being efficient and responsible, and that's what we're doing. And if you go back and say, well, they turned it down.
Oh, no, they're watching right now, they're watching.
Perfect, then they know that we are supporting.
I don't have to tell them anything.
But if you go back and fuel the fire and try to create a divide or feed into a divide.
What are you assuming about my position and my comments with my staff and how I handle my staff? What are you assuming?
I did not assume, I said if.
Excuse me, do I need to, my gavel? My pretend gavel? Are we taking the roll? And we failed, we'll move on. Our budget workshop dates. So going into our budget, I would like at least three dates. I did request one more, I believe it, oh, where's my calendar? They offered May 2nd. Hold on, sorry. Yes, this, May 2nd was added on to it after I looked at them, like I really wanted three with a, with a backup option and with these four dates that didn't give us room.
I think April 10th is a, don't you guys recognize that as a holiday? April, Easter Monday?
No.
We don't recognize Easter as a holiday?
April 10th.
No, okay. I just saw.
I would think we would.
I'd say they could get Friday.
Yeah, that's Easter Monday, but I don't know, we're not, we're in the office, we're in the office now.
We'll take it.
Let it be.
So we would like three dates. If you had time to look at them, is there anything that just doesn't work for anybody? Enough to not get us our quorum?
11th, 24th, and 25th are fine with me.
Are you talking May or?
And I'm gonna look at May 2nd now.
April, the first on here are April, and I just gave May 2nd as an alternative should we need it also.
May 2nd's a Tuesday.
I'm okay with these dates. I don't have one.
Yeah, the only one that would be an issue would be April 10th from.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Okay, as we are trying to, I gave you the ordinance in here, trying to stay on top of things as the second page, the transmittal to council would be no later than May 15th, so that we're hoping to get these done in April for the May 2nd one in order to get it to council per our ordinance. Okay, so we're just striking the 10th and keeping, we'll stick with the three in April and use May 2nd as an alternate in case we need it. Okay, we will go with that. We will go with that.
Well, you're going to reach out and see when we can do these, right? Are we just approving the bottom four?
We're going to do April eleventh, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, and we will leave the second as an alternate in case one of these April dates don't work all of a sudden.
At seven o'clock?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
I have to get off the subject here. I agree with your dates here, but just got a text from our building inspector, Mr. Balmerio, regarding the park. He says a building permit is required.
They were referencing that it didn't.
Yeah, well.
Just so, so, so Trap, just make sure that the committee is full, the building permit.
Thank you.
We will. Okay, and lastly, our Romeo Park Citizen Task Force.
Yes, so the task force has met for the second time. And they understand that they have been charged with looking at the village as a whole for green space and parks. They're, they have identified their first and foremost primary, primarily, primary focus? Thank you, is the property on Sisson Street. And they have some ideas and some vision and what they want to do with it. They want to call it a green space, not necessarily a park. They want to keep it more of a zen memorial, so there might be a path to walk through and maybe a bench. But they, their focus is not on congregating or picnic tables or having folks spend a lot of time there.
Is it more secluded to that area than?
Pardon me?
Is it more secluded to that area of residents than the rest of the village's residents?
The board currently is made up of four residents who directly abut to that property. And then myself as the liaison. We talked about getting other residents' perspectives and what other people would like to see. So again, we open it up to the community if someone would like to join this council. I think it would be good to get other perspectives.
We do have two seats left on it. We had left in our motion for up to seven. And of all of the people that put in their name were everyone in that location. Essentially, I only chose to do five, leaving the two seats open to draw from the rest of the village.
The official before you on the committee.
So if somebody else from the village in the different quadrants would like to be on this task force, that'd be great.
Yeah. You mentioned we might need to take some action or?
Well, I'm, yes, so I suggested we work a little bit harder engaging residents from other parts of the community to get their input. And I also suggested that maybe we advertise it a little bit more. And it would also be nice if you, if the task force could meet at a time
that was a little more conducive to more of the whole of the village, two in the afternoon, or I don't know what time the last one was.
Two o'clock on Thursdays.
Yeah, if we could get it to an evening meeting, so that the whole of the village could participate.
I will pose that.
It just makes it a little more available for everyone. And this room is available as long as we reserve it and can get you in.
Okay, that would be great. So the action that needs to be taken is they are asking if the village would provide a limited amount of funds to help advertise to get residents involved, to help start their process of how are they going to fund this? What are the things they want to do if they have to get the property surveyed? Those types of things. So I shared with them that I would approach. They have no idea at this point how much they feel they need. But we could do a, you know, up to, not to exceed type budget.
I don't know, I think I would.
Ultimately, I get Parks and Recs in charge of the parks?
Yes, but they don't want to call it a park or have it designated as a park. They want it to be just a green space.
That's kind of what we tasked them with, was to look at places for parks, right?
We got that Second Street property too, don't we?
First?
First Street.
First Street, I'm sorry, on the dead end street? Have you looked at that yet?
That's been discussed. They will look at all four quadrants, but the goal is to first complete Sisson.
Complete.
Complete it as a green space.
Well, I'm not sure that's what we necessarily task them with.
Any of the residents over there care about joining together and buying the property?
I, we certainly could propose that. I mean, it is, they are very passionate about that property.
They want to do, they want the property a specific way. So maybe they might pull their muddies and take it off our hands.
Because if it does become a green space, again, we are maintaining it. If it is, if they purchase it, then we have the tax base.
And they're responsible for the green space.
Well, if it's just a green space, is it welcoming?
Well.
I mean, that's, you know, if there's a sign that says park, okay, you're welcome. You know you'd go in there, it's not a problem. But if it doesn't say anything, it's just a green space.
Why are you going to get charged with trespassing?
Yeah, does this belong to that guy?
Well, they would like to have a walking path. They would like to have a walking path and a bench and potentially approach the tree board for up to ten trees to be planted there next year. And then they are approaching the business owner next door to see if he wants eight to ten feet to purchase himself because he apparently was interested and they were hoping to use some of that funds towards the park. But as far as parking, which I broached with them, they said maybe two to three spaces up front to kind of butt into the land, so two or three people could park. But their vision is it's moms walking by with strollers who just want to take a break. It's seniors who want somewhere to walk. If kids want to play, if people want to have picnics, then they can go across the street to Crowe's Well and use that area. But it's not for congregating specifically. It's a green, quiet memorial type space. Like they were looking at what happened at Twenty-Seven and Van Dyke with that memorial space. And they don't necessarily want to do all the monuments and everything, but they like the landscaping and the peaceful atmosphere of it and would like to possibly mimic that. So.
I would like them to look at all the options of it, though. I mean, being, becoming a park was what they were looking into, but also what else could this be? Not just solely, it's going to be a park.
Well, I certainly will go back and reengage that same conversation. In the meantime, would the board like to give them a small budget to try and engage other residents? Or if they?
I would think it would be appropriate if they have something in mind to approach us with a specific want, proposal, an invoice for us to approve at that point.
Okay. I will relay.
Should we put something on the village website? Just asking for input and from residents? I mean, that's something that we've done pretty inexpensively, I would think, maybe a little post on the website. Reaching out, maybe, could they forward it to your email, Shelley?
You need a copy of what?
Copy text, somebody can give me a script.
Okay, and if you, can you create a form and then just the results get sent to my email?
Our website does not have that, we can create a form, but it doesn't have the capabilities for submissions.
Just give them some bullet point questions and they can just email you.
I say.
They can download the form, but they can't.
There are a lot of, there are different surveys out there that are free. I don't know if Survey Monkey is free. There's other ones that they could look into that don't necessarily cost. However, I do see that not all of our residents are going to be on the internet and filling out a survey. So there would be a benefit in a different type, a mailer, newspaper ad something. But yeah, come back.
I think that's kind of what I was trying to present to them, as something more.
While we're on property, Tim, how far does our property go down behind your building? Does it go down to the creek?
Yes.
I think you guys ought to look at that too, it's in the village.
Yes, that is on, it is on the agenda to look at. You're talking, we're first dead ends and, yeah.
Mr. Kirk is shaking his head, no.
Well, the property's not in the village, it's in Armita Township, the village owns it. And you can, you can do within lawful limits whatever you want with the property, but it's, it's not in the village.
Okay, but we do own the property.
You do.
So it is something that we might.
But you might, for what your use, if you're going to use it, you would be subject to the Armita Township ordinances. I don't know if they permit multiple uses. You've got the DPW site, do they allow multiple uses on one parcel? I don't know, I've never looked at any of their Armita Township ordinances, but you can't. It's owned by the village, but it's not in the village.
I thought we were talking about Sisson Street. Well, we did, but I just checked. Trail, it's got water down there.
Well, when he's, he's talking about the one on Powell.
Okay, anything else to present from the committee or any other requests?
So can we have enough of a budget to run an ad in the paper to encourage others to get involved? Or should I make a motion and then you guys go?
I think we were looking for something that had a dollar amount on it that we could approve?
Yeah, for them to actually present, so I would want to see the ad, see the print, present us with it, the whole.
Perfect.
I know half pages, we just did the tree board. Three, three something, I don't remember, three, four?
I saw that, I, yeah, that's what I was trying to model, okay, I will let them know. Thank you.
Before we adjourn, I don't think we approved these. Did we approve these special, or the closed session? I don't think we approved those because we pulled apart the meeting. Or we pulled apart the consent agenda, we never approved those.
Go ahead, Johnson.
So I'll make a motion to approve the closed session meeting minutes from February twenty-seventh. Support?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion for adjourn?
Support?
Ten fifteen. All in favor?
Aye.